Share with me something about Principal McDaniel. They would immediately light up. They would immediately get a smile on their face and they would have some fun thing to share with me about Rob. And if you know Rob very well, you know that he is a happy person and he loves to have fun. And he is not shy about that at Cypress High School. We were able to then go down to the Midwinter Conference and in front of all of the secondary principals and assistant principals in the state of Utah. We were able to officially present him with the award. State Superintendent Sid Dixon was there as well to present him with that award. So as you all know, it's been a challenging few years for all of us, truly, for students, teachers, and administrators. The secondary principals and assistant principals in the state of Utah. We were able to officially present him with the award. Why we're doing this. He loves his job, he loves Cypress High School. So as you all know, it's been a challenging few years at Cypress. And his mom was a student at Cypress. And every time he talks about Cypress, he gets so emotional. He loves his school, he loves the students. And that's one thing that I would say, as a former high school principal myself, it is the best job in the world, but it's truly one of the hardest jobs in the world. And especially the last few years, I love that there's somebody like Rob that just reminds us that we can love it and that we can have fun every single day. And that's what Rob does. He has fun, he loves his job. We're so proud of him and appreciate all that he does and want to congratulate him for being our Utah High School Principal of the Year.
All right, we're going to move on to our Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to invite Josh Leroy, Principal of Olympus Junior High, to come and lead us in the pledge.
And Cypress is ranked number two in the state, so you can get on and watch. The game started about 20 minutes ago. All right, thank you. On three, one, two, three.
See you tomorrow.
Rhonda? Oh, you want me to come up? Yes.
The sweet Sesame Street tie. I like it.
I'm a love it, sweet logo on the back. I never wear a tie twice in a year. I have a different tie every day.
It's how I feel about it.
Really, every single year, every single day of the year.
That's good.
That is a lot of ties.
Thanks so much. Principal McDaniel, I just want to say, he is, he's also helped train a lot of other administrators that we love and admire here in this district. And so, not only does he do a great job there at Cypress, but he really has been a great example to a lot of people. So we appreciate your, your hard work there. All right, are we, Ben, are we back to the other one? Or are we on to School Counselors Appreciation Week?
I think we'd like to try and proceed. Hopefully, we can recognize those who are here with us.
All right, so Lynn, we're going to invite you back up. You wanted your steps in today, right?
Board President McDermott, Board Superintendent and Superintendent C., thanks for having me here tonight. I am honored to present some really awesome teachers here tonight. We have at least two, and I think possibly more, teachers with us that have achieved their National Board Teacher Certification. So I just want to take a minute or two and tell you a little bit about what it takes to achieve that certification. The National Board for Professional Teaching Standards was created in 1987 and is an independent nonprofit organization. Its mission is to establish high and rigorous standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. It's a national system to assess and certify teachers who meet very rigorous standards. In short, I like to say that National Board Certification is a demonstration of teaching practice measured against very high standards. We currently have 25 National Board Certified Teachers here in Granite, and we have about 3,700 teachers. So it lets you know that it's a very select few that achieve National Board Certification. In order to do that, they have to build a portfolio that centers around student work. It has tasks in it. They have to videotape their teaching, their student lesson plans. They have to show examples of parent communication. And then they have to reflect upon all these things. They then have to take a test and show their proficiency in whatever area they are receiving their certification in. This typically takes, they have a four-month window to do this, and takes about 200 to 400 hours, sometimes more, to complete this process. So it is a very rigorous process, and we're very proud of these teachers that have achieved it. So tonight, I am here to introduce one of our newly, we have two newly certified teachers this year. One of them is Michelle Jones from Cypress High. I'm going to have Michelle. To complete this process. So it is a very rigorous process. She was one of those that is at parent-teacher conferences tonight, is Stephanie Gonzalez. Oh, you are here, Stephanie. Both Stephanie and Michelle, newly certified this year. And then we have four others. Yes, I'm going to have that recertified this year. So we have with us tonight Joanne Brown, Michelle Morgan, Celeste Cohom, and Cynthia Pearson. If you are here, I'm going to invite them to come up as well. She has taken on the big task of organizing and supporting the support group, and she's National Board Certified herself. Deborah, come join us. Or maybe not. Again, thank you for your time and thank you for your support of these wonderful teachers.
Can we have them come up? Yeah.
Congratulations.
So much. Thank you. Congratulations.
Joanne Brown, that's the coolest shack in this whole place.
We're going to go shopping to John's Closet.
Still look back, so I'm not in the picture. Sorry.
Thanks so much. I have to say, I got the information this year and was thinking about doing it, and I looked at it and it's now sitting on my desk at school. It's a lot. It's a lot of work, and so I really, really appreciate what you all have done to get there. And I'm probably going to have to pick your brain on how to do this because I just, I feel overwhelmed by it. Congratulations. Thank you so much for that commitment to teaching and to quality teaching. So, thank you. All right, we are going to turn the time over kind of to Ben for our School Counselor Appreciation Week. We have a video.
We're going to start a video for this recognition, and obviously, we've had our principals working out of their local schools to make recognitions as well, but we just have a brief video to make that recognition. We'll play that right now.
I've always said there's one thing you have to know being a counselor, and it doesn't matter what level you're at, and that is that you never know what's going to walk through your door.
Anyone see a teacher from the school, if you're a teacher, if you're a principal? Well, I think about this school council, we play a large part in helping to make sure they're in the right classes, and maybe even kind of expand their vision a little bit of where, what they can achieve.
And to see these kids, the students eventually turn things around, finally put on the light switch, helps them keep them through and graduate. I mean, it's an amazing process, and I love the graduation aspect of just watching the kid walk across that stage, give them a moment, give them a, you know, after they, after they give their life, I call them kids, like they're not students, they're like, oh, you don't want that. And it's just an amazing feeling.
For me, what I don't want is a school counselor, what kind of way I have to help students figure out what they're helping, what they aspire to do, what's beyond high school graduation. What is that target that kids kind of have that, that forward vision, even beyond the next week? When I started this job, I had a full head of hair. So I'm stressed, and that's why I always do not my life. So I feel like we play a crucial role in the building sometimes, where we're kind of the mediator between the parents and teachers and students and teachers and admin, where someone who's that middle glue that helps kind of negotiate some of those things.
I care about the kid. I want everything that can help your kid, you know, whatever it is that needs to be aligned, you know? If it's mental health stuff, they're going to want to get their mental health back on track, so they're there to be a helping person. With this, just focusing on graduation, my school, basketball, and great, whatever it is, getting graduated at my school, whether it's scholarship, college, whatever, I mean, that's my goal is to help those students get to a different point, get a point to be.
I think that some I love is, like when the light bulb turns on and a kid gets it, it's like, oh, I can. As I said last year, after being with me, he realized that he could achieve the dream he had, that what he wanted to do was a possibility. And that's, that's why the problem is those kids kind of realizing like, oh, I can do this, I can be successful, to see that, that drive, that effort to finally get to that point. That's, that's the process in the case.
It's been on our website, and we shared it in multiple places, and I think it would be appropriate if we had any and all school counselors with us today and stand to be recognized.
Do we have any school counselors with us? Go ahead.
So I had just to follow up on this. I know we have school counselors, and every high school has a college career counselor. So Judy, are we making sure that they are, are they lumped in with this counselor week? Do they have a separate recognition?
They get an entire month. It's CTE month all through February, so we're celebrated.
Okay, so they're celebrated through that. Okay, I was just wondering, because they're kind of their lone island in the school.
Yes, we recognize that as part of our counseling team.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks. I have to say, I feel like counselors wear a dozen different hats, you know? We, as teachers, do too, but you guys wear completely different hats and are incredible at it. I love, I think we've all, Kim hasn't experienced this yet, but you, I think you'll love it too, when we go to graduations and we sit there with our counseling team and get to hear about these graduates and how invested they, these counselors are with them. My favorite, just real quick, my favorite moment was standing at the, in Taylorsville in 2020 with that graduating class. They walked outside, and I sat, I stood by one of the counselors, Ms. Natter, and it was amazing. As those kids came, she knew every single name without, without knowing, you know, without, without just seeing them. And she could tell me exactly where they were going, what they were doing, if they had any problems getting to graduation, just the investment that they had. So, thank you. Pass that on, please, to your, to your team. Sorry. Anyway, all right, we are going to move on. We have no elected officials, so we're going to go on, and no patrons signed up for participation. So we are going to move on to our consent agenda. We've had this for a few days, several days to look over it and ask questions. I do want to bring to attention that there was an amended agenda that was sent earlier today. So if you did not see that, please check your email and make sure that you understand because there were a couple of things that were changed on the consent items. So if there's no questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the consent, Jenna.
A second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions or concerns? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Motion passes. With that, I turn it to you or John. Okay, we're going to turn this time over to John for a real quick part of this that we just approved.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent C., it's my privilege at this time to introduce to you one of my new elementary school leadership improvement directors. I say new, but she's actually been doing the job for us this year in the interim because, if you recall, just before the school year started, we kind of stole Tyler Howe and put him, placed him out at Granger High School, and so we had to get creative. And we took Cindy from her position in our talent development department where she was doing onboarding, and we slid her over to help out with, to fill that spot. And we have posted that and we interviewed for it, and Cindy is a successful candidate. But I would like to tell you a little bit about her. She started her career here in Granite as a teacher, and then she moved to be a specialist in educational technology. She did that for a number of years. And then she decided she wanted to jump into administration, and she actually went through the program in our district, and she did an internship at Jefferson, and then she became an assistant principal at Jefferson. Then she became a principal at Calvin Smith, and then a principal at South Kearns before she came here to the district. So we want to congratulate Cindy and this new appointment. Cindy, will you please stand? So Cindy, will you take time to introduce who you have here with you tonight?
I have my lucky husband, who's super supportive, who's kind of put into a lot to my career, changing all the time. And then my amazing mom, who makes me quiet.
You guys couldn't even tell that that was her mother, could you? Yeah, welcome. We're glad to have you here tonight, and congratulations. So, thanks.
Thank you so much. I just have to say, love Cindy because she's, she was at my kid's school and I worked with her as PTA president, so I know what a phenomenal person she is and that she would be great for this job. So, thank you. Congratulations. All right, we are going to move on to our action items. We have capital project management by Justin Nagley. Did I say it right, Nagley?
Nagley, you got it.
Okay. Sorry, I had to catch myself there. So we're going to invite you to come on back up, and we're going to have a chat about this. Right?
Which one are you after? Which one's yours? Do you have a presentation? You don't have a presentation? No, we don't need to look.
I thought I was just questioning that.
No, no, we were just making sure you didn't have a presentation.
There are so many presentations tonight, I don't know why, it's just a really full agenda, so we apologize.
Okay, so we, earlier, at the five o'clock session, we had talked a little bit about what this is concerning. Just to give you the background, we have not had an owner's rep in our largest two construction projects, which is Skyline High School and Cypress High School. We've had our team here at the district trying to handle things for the last year, and I think feeling overwhelmed, if I, if that's not reaching too much to say that. And so, they have requested that we look at bringing on another capital project management team.
Maybe to tee that up just a little bit further, Justin, if you don't mind, Board President, just explaining some of the nuanced reasons as to why we're considering again an owner's rep, what it's meant for you and your staff over the last 10, 11 months that's led us to this point, to consider once again an owner's rep. If you wouldn't mind just articulating that for the board.
Sure, thank you. Well, as Superintendent I mentioned, we started this process really in kind last year about this time, reviewing things. The contract we had with our previous owner's rep had run its course through design. They were great in helping us get through the design phase, and we were in the process of looking to extending that into a construction administration phase. That is something that we didn't have. And at the time, we, we went out, looked at the state contract, and both BDK that was here earlier and our former owner, Professor Moka, were on this, on the approved state, state list. And so we solicited a list of services and their pricing, and BDK was the less expensive of the two. There's a third party, but they're also affiliated with Herm Hughes, and that would be a conflict of interest, so we couldn't, we couldn't go down that way. So anyway, we started that process and a lot of back and forth, trying to massage what we had as far as our department and our staff and what we felt like we needed. And it did go quite sometime, and I, and I feel like that's to a point where these projects, in my estimation, are, we need more hands on deck. And I, I think there's three, if I can, I think there's three huge benefits from entertaining this. The first is to relieve and provide relief for our department. I don't want to burn anybody out or lose qualified current employees, and so that's a big deal. The second one is what, it will help us with Skyline and Cypress, the two big projects that are, that take so much time, and it's just, it's enormous and it's overwhelming how much time they take. And then the third is by bringing somebody else on, it helps us serve all of the other projects. We were just talking about today, we were in a meeting talking about a football field at a certain high school, and when we're there, that is the most important project at that time. But while we're there, the other projects continue to go, right? And so just having somebody to be able to help us, that we can step away for a brief moment from Skyline and Cypress and feel like that's in good hands, why we give attention to the other projects. So that's, that's another reason why I feel like it's, it's critical to help us serve all of our projects, not just two big ones that get the most hubbub. Does that work?
All right, I know we had several people with questions, so would anybody, Mark, would you like to start?
Sure. So can you elaborate on where the specific funding will come for, for this particular contract? I realize there was maybe some that was budgeted with respect to Moka. Relieving them a year ago has created some additional funds that would be available. I don't think that that's sufficient from what's in the budget, but can you speak to that, please?
Sure. We have not quite half, but I think it was a million and three, million and four of that leftover monies from, from the, from the constructions, from the design services that Moka was performing for us through administering that, those, that phase. And so the balance would have to come from both projects, the balance would come from monies that's within that larger budget, that performa, above the 174 at, at, at Skyline and Cypress, but within the, the larger monies that we set aside for design services and inspections that are outsourced, FFNE, those, those types of, those scopes of the work project that aren't in the contractor's purview or in their contract, if you will. Does that make sense? So it's in with, in the performa or within that budget of the overall project, but, but not under the initial construction contract, obviously, because the contractor, that's, that's just for the building itself.
So I'm still a little confused. It's like, what, what, you mentioned FFNE, furniture fixture and equipment? Does that mean that we're, we're over budgeted for that particular line item? Are there other line items that are over budgeted? You know, I don't get the sense that we're sitting in a good financial position with respect to Skyline, for example, in terms of budget. So I'm just kind of curious. I don't mean to get too far into the weeds here, Justin, but I think we got to get into them to some extent because I need to understand where the money's going to come from to be able to pull this off if we go forward.
So, sure. So to your point, yes, I think the, the goal when this was all set up by Don and, and others, that, hey, let's put monies in there that we think is going to cover. We have asbestos and hazardous materials, removal and abatement that's in there. We just looked at that the other day at Skyline. I hate to say anything out loud because as soon as I do, we're going to be jinxed, but there's, we're, we're track, we're tracking ahead of that, or better than that budget that's there, if you will. I don't want to spend that money yet, but, but we are tracking better than that, you know? I think the same could be said for the FFNE budget. So there are some things that we could look at, absolutely. I, I feel confident that we can do that, but, you know, I don't have that in front of me to go through all those numbers right, right here.
So one of my concerns is I don't, depending on how this vote goes, I don't want to have this vote perceived as any kind of expansion of the budget, per se. So that's why I'm, I'm trying to strike this balance between really getting into the nuts and bolts of the, of the budget versus how we're going to pay for it, if that makes sense. So I'm conflicted in that regard because I don't get the sense, I'm so worried about Skyline at this point, and being over budget and being further over budget, that I just, I'm not sure where the money's going to come from, and I don't want to risk any misunderstanding in what we do in conducting this business tonight, that we're expanding the budget for, for that project.
So a couple of issues here that may come into play in helping answer that question. One is, of course, primarily if we can work within the budget that's already been approved, then that would be ideal, right? Recognizing that, as was mentioned earlier, there are significant challenges within the construction market that may, may challenge that. And rather than increase it, what does that look like in terms of opportunity within the budget? But secondly, recognizing an option that may exist, where we've already have some significant funds that we could put toward this if the Board would and administration may feel this way as well. I would say I do. I would like to, let's use those funds, have BDK come return and report. What are they experiencing? Are we getting the value on, evaluate the, evaluate the services before we go down the road and saying, okay, what other budgets might? I mean, if the values add is there and we feel like, hey, you know what, we're getting a great return on, on what it is that's being provided. I mean, I recognize BDK may not be, be thrilled with the prospect of us not continuing, but that's with any contract, clearly, that we, that we have. We want to make sure that we're getting a good return on that, on that investment. And then at such time, we'd be able to say, okay, we've used the funds that have already been set aside for this. Where are we at? Where are we going in terms of moving forward and whether or not we continue to look at these budgets, recognizing also that we may, still early in the session, but we might receive some state assistance in terms of capital projects as well that we could identify. But that would represent a change order still in terms of the additional cost, but at least the revenue source would be identified to help offset, offset that. So to the, if, if, you know, in terms of an FFNE budget, if we're to pull it from there, one is to say, okay, is it there? Or, and/or, what are we compromising out of that budget that we wouldn't be able to have had we gone down this road? And so it's, it's managing expectations between trade-offs, getting a building in on time, some quality control, some change order articulations, whatever those may be, at what cost, though? To maybe something else within the building that might come through FFNE. And/or, coming back to the board and fully transparent, saying, we understand this, we ran through it, they present what it is their value add is, and then we determined to go forward. It may escalate beyond what's already been approved and require a change order. So I don't want to mislead the board and suggest that it wouldn't lead to that point, but we're, we're going to look internally first and then identify other budgets and sources and opportunities.
So if I may follow up on a couple of things there. Number one, is the nature of the proposal, and I think we're still in the proposal stage from BDK. Do we have the flexibility to kick the tires, as, to put it?
have. We want to make sure that we're getting a good return on that investment. And then at such time, we'd be able to say, okay, we've used the funds that have already been set aside for this. Where are we at? Where are we going in terms of moving forward? And whether or not we continue to look at these budgets, recognizing also that we may, still early in the session, but we might receive some state assistance in terms of capital projects as well, that we could identify. But that would represent a change order still in terms of the additional cost, but at least the revenue source would be identified to help offset that. So to the, if, you know, in terms of an FFNE budget, if we're to pull it from there, one is to say, okay, is it there? Or and/or, what are we compromising out of that budget that we wouldn't be able to have had we gone down this road? And so it's managing expectations between trade-offs, getting a building in on time, some quality control, some change order articulations, whatever those may be, at what cost, though? To maybe something else within the building that might come through FFNE. And/or, coming back to the board and fully transparent, saying, we understand this, we ran through it, they present what it is their value add is, and then we determine to go forward. It may escalate beyond what's already been approved and require a change order. So I don't want to mislead the board and suggest that it wouldn't lead to that point, but we're going to look internally first and then identify other budgets and sources and opportunities.
So if I may follow up on a couple of things there. Number one, is the nature of the proposal, and I think we're still in the proposal stage from BDK. Do we have the flexibility to kick the tires, as to put it a little bit crudely, you were much more eloquent, but, you know, can we take kind of a little bit of a phased approach? This, what's before us tonight is, you know, almost $4 million. Can we take a little bit more of a phased approach here with BDK to say, let's have an initial tranche, an initial assessment, and then let's reevaluate from there? Is that feasible? Does that, does that put your team in a more difficult position to create that flexibility for the district? What are the implications of that proceeding in that kind of fashion, rather than approving $4 million all at once tonight? So that's item one. I'll let you address that.
Yeah, that's interesting. We have looked at it internally. I mean, it's like all state contracts. I think Superintendent just acknowledged that there is an "out" clause, right? So that could be there. I would hope that we don't go into any relationship looking for the "out" clause, but there is that opportunity. And so if things aren't progressing or they don't meet our level of expectations, that we would have that right to sit down and have that hard conversation and make those decisions.
And I assume we're now experienced in doing that, because we did that with Moca, fair to say, to be blunt?
Yeah. So there is that opportunity, I think. I think that's something that Todd brought up, and one of the means we were in is that this is, it's a pay-as-you-go, if you will, right? And so, is that a fair assessment? I think Todd is putting words in your mouth, sorry, but we had talked about that, and so maybe that helps with a little bit of latitude as well.
Yeah. So what we're looking at is multi-year arrangement, and so you would schedule the payments to be at some anniversary or at some performance level. And we don't, even though it's quoted as a lump sum, we don't pay it all on day one. We pay as we move through.
I was, in addition to that, too, I think that one thing that we should consider is, at least in the people who I look at with contracts, if they were going to, if we were going to say, well, we want to kind of reevaluate as we go, their price goes up, you know? And I wouldn't want that to happen either.
Yeah, that's why I asked what the implications are.
But I agree with you, Clark. I don't like the nebulousness of it either, so I appreciate that.
My other concern, Rich, with your comment, in terms of potential additional funding from the state legislature for capital projects, I worry about already almost acquiescing some of that potential money. Granted, we don't have it yet, but saying that we could use that for Skyline, when we have all of these other projects that are already on hold because of the escalations associated with Skyline. So I just want to be blunt about that, from my perspective, that I think we ought to be careful in any way earmarking additional funding that could come in the future that way.
All right. Two things. I am happy to hear that we kind of do have that "out" clause, and that we're also paying by increments. I think that satisfies my concern that you brought up earlier, as far as it's not just that 4 million upfront. I have a question on, I mean, this whole idea of an owner's rep. We've gone down this path before, I think all of us, most of us remember Moca. My sense is that some of our problems with Moca were frankly, some personality conflicts, some communication deficits. So my big question in bringing on a new owner's rep, who is the point of contact at the district for BDK? Is that you? Is it one of your directors? Or one of your colleagues? Who is BDK going to call when there's a big problem and needs to talk to the owner or the district?
So, we, go ahead. We've talked about this a little bit. I believe that would be, yes, me. It would come through me as the director of our department, and then funnel everything upstream to all of Ben, Don, and the superintendent, and eventually to the board as well. So that would be my understanding. I don't know, Superintendent, if that's what you're thinking is.
It is. I was just going to make it a little less awkward for you, if I said it was you, right?
I didn't mean for my question to be awkward, sorry.
No, it's not, but it may be awkward to say, oh, that's me, right? But it would be Justin that would serve as that point of contact, as he directs these projects.
Could I just point out, too, as you heard the presentation, that that's the stage one of the implementation, is to determine what that relationship looks like. And I think that's, to your point, a very critical point for us to be able to establish what that looks like.
I just want the relationship to be better than it was, because we saw what can happen when that's not there, that foundation of the communication and relationship and everything. So I'm just, that's where, I always come at it from kind of a personnel issue, right? The HR background in me, that are those relationships going to be in place, so that communication can be free-flowing without just having potential, you know, conflict? So that's why I bring that up.
I would say just the fact that, I think even earlier, when Chris was here talking, that he and I and some of our team have been talking for almost a year now about whether this was going on, and if it was, what would they need. We've had some ongoing dialogue and discussion. They've seen drawings, they've seen contracts and different things. So they're very familiar with what's going on. We've had good dialogue, I think. I don't hesitate to say that we would have a good working relationship.
I just had a quick question. Did we build a management team into Cypress's build? When we, because we talked about Skyline, but I can't remember if Cypress had also a budgeted amount for.
Right. So what was being proposed, I believe, I didn't see it today, but what was being proposed, well, it's the one I sent, the one that was from BDK, is for both schools.
So for both, but that was originally built into the Cypress budget, when we approved the budget for Cypress?
So initially for the design, absolutely. Moca was serving for both. And we hadn't transitioned into a construction administration when the actual construction started. That's where that contract.
So they did start Cypress?
With design.
With design phase?
Yes, they were involved with, yes, yes, yes.
Go ahead, Dr. Day.
Well, I just wanted to be clear that, yeah, the gravity of the situation in terms of this investment is significant. And when I suggest other budgets, if necessary, it would be because we're realizing a benefit. But it does come at a cost, in terms of, you know, sacrifice of other efforts. And so that's why, primarily, if we can work it into the existing budget for these two projects, that would be ideal. But yeah, part of what weighs on us is recognizing that making this investment, one, is to get Cypress and Skyline in a place where they're on time. And I've said this of project managers before, easier said than done. They only have two jobs, really. One is to come in budget and finish on time, right? And there's a quality control piece there. I mean, we could, we add into that. But that would be the return, essentially, in that space, if we could find it in there. But recognizing if we did and had to come back to the board, and the board were to say, yeah, no, that is a value add, which we anticipated it would be, but, I mean, won't know until we turn on the ground. But it would come at a sacrifice for potentially other projects if it fell outside of the currently approved budget.
But it also has the potential, and I think we need to not overlook this, one of the reasons to bring on an owner's rep is for cost savings. And so they're there on the ground to help, obviously, do the day-to-day and keep the project on time and everything, but they're also there to catch mistakes, which can potentially put more money back in the budget. So I think, I think we just need to be aware that the potential is there to have some savings as well. So while you're bringing up, and wisely so, you know, this is just, these are things we have to weigh as board members, but I think it's unwise to overlook that there's potential savings built into this.
Can I add to that? Excuse me, not only financial, but also just the long term of these buildings, right? They're supposed to be around for 60, 70, 80 years. If you've got somebody on site, each site, eight hours a day, 40 hours a week, that is going to be a better building, right? You're going to catch a lot of those, oops, there goes our screen.
I think we're okay.
But you're going to catch a lot of those mistakes.
I lost your presentation there.
For the longevity of the building, it is a good investment to have a better building that will last.
No question. And I don't mean to not adequately recognize that point. I mean, I think we all are recognizing the need, and we're trying to make sure we do our due diligence, that there's a return on the investment. And that's clearly our hope. I mean, I'll speak for myself, as I probably should, but I recognize that there's a significant need here. And my sincere hope is that by looking at this, that there is a return on investment, and that we can ensure the quality of the construction to last for decades, because the situation is, there is some gravity to it, for sure. We're in a tough situation, I think, with Skyline, and I think we have to acknowledge that. And we need to take steps to mitigate those challenges and to correct the problems that have surfaced to this point, and hopefully mitigate any future additional problems as well. And so I want to make sure I emphasize that, yeah, I'm extremely hopeful that there would be a significant return on the investment. That doesn't change the fact that we've got to come up with the out-of-pocket monies to fund the investment in the first place.
Correct. And I would say, add to that, is that we also see that investment on the other projects, because now we have the ability to really devote time to other projects, a roofing project or other things that come up, too. And the other point I wanted to make, that I know this has gone on for almost a year now in the calendar, but part of that early on was, I wasn't not convinced that they couldn't do a good job. I think they absolutely will do a great job. It's, I knew how much money it was. In fact, the superintendent I talked, he asked me to push back. I did push back. It did come down, the number came down, believe that or not. And I even looked at, can we do, can we augment that staff a little bit? And there was some back and forth. But it did take a while for me to come to the grips, because I do appreciate how much that money that is, and what does that mean for the district-wide and for other projects? So anyway, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I just wanted to take a minute to thank you for the work that you've put in over the last year, because I feel like I have seen it pretty firsthand. And it's been a rough year for you. And I think you've done a spectacular job of juggling all the things that we've asked you to juggle. And I want you to know that because I've seen that, I 100% support what we're doing. I was also pretty shocked at the price tag and had some questions about that. But I feel pretty confident that, like Clark said, that I think, after looking at it, I think we will receive our return on investment. But I think some of that, I'm kind of acknowledging to myself, some of that return is not, is going to be stuff that we won't necessarily be able to, it's not going to be as tangible as we might think. It won't be a direct connection, some of that. It doesn't mean that we don't want enough that is a direct connection, that, you know, we can measure it. But I just want to acknowledge that there will be some things that are not measurable, that will be a return on that investment as well. But I really especially wanted to thank you and commend you for the job that you've done when we've kind of put you in a tough situation. And thanks, because you've had a spectacular attitude about it all.
Thank you. And we have a great team. So anyway, it's a lot of people. Thank you. That's very kind.
Well, we pass that on to your team, too.
Absolutely will.
Thanks.
Kim or Connie, do you have anything?
Just thanks.
I did have questions, but thanks to all the others that have spoken up, they were all answered, so.
Okay, great. All right, this is an action item. As far as the question of, do we want to approve this?
I move that we approve our capital project, I don't know how you say this.
Now, what do you want to say on that?
So are we approving the, are we approving BDK as the owner rep for the capital project management? Wait, just a minute. Oh, okay. I move that we approve as the construction management services for Skyline and Cypress High School, BDK. No. Oh, and Clark wants me to read that it's 3.952 million.
I second it.
I don't even remember what I said, Nicole, so good luck.
Clark, repeat that for me. So there's a motion to approve the capital management.
Construction, okay, I'll read it to you. Construction management services for Skyline and Cypress High.
Construction management services for Skyline and Cypress High School.
As BDK.
As BDK, for 3.9.
5.2.
5.2 million. And there was a second. And if there, is there any further discussion or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, passes with unanimous support. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And truly do thank your team and for all that you've done.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to invite Steve up here. Steve, you've got five minutes.
We can do it in four.
Steve, you've got four minutes.
He's got a lot, yeah.
Talk fast.
Sorry, I'll start talking, actually, as this comes up. So, yeah, Board President and Board Members, Superintendents, Superintendencies, thanks. And I'd like to say that I'm back, but the reality is, I never really leave. And that's just kind of the way it is these days, and that's okay. I say often, especially the last couple of years, that our process is like a school year. While a lot of people on the outside see a school year starting and stopping, if you're involved, you know that the process never really ends. Even though a decision was made on our last studies and closures in December, we are still actively transitioning those. One small example, and I'll move on, and that is in trying to get the message out to everyone still about what happened and the results of that change. I think at last count, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, but I think Darla and Gayna especially worked hard to get 27 different versions of a letter out to all of the affected communities. That doesn't mean there were 27 communities affected, but different specific versions of things people need to know. So that gives you some idea of what transition is like. So let me jump in. I'll try to be as informative and succinct as possible. The PAC has, as always, met and continues to meet, and we've met a couple of times recently. And I'm going to jump right into what the recommendations are and rely on perhaps some questions to answer any others. So the recommendations from the PAC, as the representative and Chair of the PAC, are to study the potential reopening of Broadbank as a junior high in conjunction with the current reconfiguration effort. So just quickly, remember that I lead boundary studies, population analysis studies, with Ben's tremendous assistance. Ben leads reconfiguration efforts, and I assist where I can. Ben is already in the process, and jump in, Ben, if you need to, but already in the process of this reconfiguration. If you remember, we still have some, quite a few schools, in fact, that are not reconfigured on the west side of the valley. And we knew that we would need to complete that reconfiguration process with 25 to 30-plus schools as Cypress was being completed, perhaps a little earlier to make a decision. But we have to reconfigure by then to make all of that work. So the PAC, as we're looking at that, knowing that the reconfiguration process is ongoing, decided, and I agree, of course, that this is the best time to study the potential of reopening Broadbank. Okay? That is, in essence, the first part of the study. And I'll show you the map, and you've perhaps seen it already. Now, the second part, or the second recommendation is that we do complete another potential closure, boundary study, for areas one and two. Again, I'll show you that in just a second. And I've kind of gone over this rationale and why we would do that. But there you go, some of those numbers. 20 elementaries and four junior highs need to be reconfigured, and I didn't even list the high schools, and I think there were at least that many on there. So let me go to the next point, and that's what the maps are for, the overlapping high school and junior high networks. Here, of course, are our five areas. We were in area four this last year, and now we are looking at and considering or proposing studying areas one and two. You can see in the red the outline, but this is, again, the colors or the boundaries or for the high school networks, as you can see there. And there are several. There are, what, one, two, three, four, at least, technically part of five, if you look at Taylorsville High School networks that are represented in areas one and two. Now, just at first glance, this does, this does seem like a lot of schools. I think we've got, at last count, about 25 or 26 elementaries, six junior highs, and four high schools encompassing this area. And you're saying, gee, Steve, that's a lot more than we studied this last time. I thought this was a little different. Yet it is different. Yet it is different. Every area is a little different. And let me explain quickly why it's different. Even though there are a lot more schools, for instance, area one, I'll tell you now that I, it's early, it's early, but we don't see much, by the way, of potential closures in this area because this is our largest growth area. And again, I'm not suggesting we have growth like parts of the state. We're not Utah County or Alpine or Harriman and that, but we do have some growth, and this is one of our growth areas that we would have to be careful of. Keep in mind and remember that a couple of schools that are in area two have been closed already several years ago, three, four years ago in that area.
2019. It was January 2019 was Ocker Hills and December 2019 was.
What day of the week and time was it?
I don't want to remember.
So keep that in context with knowing. Yet, after all of that, we do feel like this is the best area to study a combination of those two because, as always, it's all because of all of this overlap. And I'll just go ahead and show you the junior high map of the same thing. It's difficult to study only one area. Remember, even last year, when we did area four, we touched, we touched on other networks and other schools. And so hence, that's why we're sending 27 versions of a letter out. So that is really it in a nutshell. Obviously, this is the beginning of the process for the calendar year, and I just wanted to use these maps to represent some of the overlap and potential complexity of these. But we've talked about this at length and feel pretty strongly that this is our, these are our best options for this calendar year.
Can I just make mention really quick on the reconfiguration question, just as a reminder where we're at in that process? I've gone and visited most of the school community councils associated with that. We anticipate holding some community meetings this spring. We'd come back in the fall, do some survey work, and bring a recommendation approximately the same time that we're looking, you know, for closures in these respective areas and looking to implement that reconfiguration for the fall of 2025.
Just really quick, just for clarification, it's not just Matheson. You said four junior highs, what are the other junior highs that are on there?
So reconfiguration right now, Granger is K5, 6'8". Hunter Jr., which is a partial feeder both to Cypress and to Hunter High, is also 7'8". So we would be looking potentially at cleaning up that feeder or adjusting that somehow. And then Matheson Jr., obviously. So it's those four junior highs.
You have Jefferson in there, I believe, or are they, no, they're already, the Westlake. Did you say Westlake?
Valley, Westlake.
Just Cypress, just Cypress, Granger, and half of Hunter.
And half of Hunter.
Two and a half.
And the feeders for those.
But what are the feeders? Who are the junior highs that are still 7'8"? Valley, Westlake, Matheson, and?
And Hunter Jr.
And Hunter Juniors. Okay, still, okay. And so those four are the ones that we're talking about as far as that?
Correct. And again, we were trying to make that decision in line with this boundary study so that we can do a full implementation by the fall of 2025. The thought had been, and you're going to hear this, if our stated plan and goal is to have Westlake open by 2024, that's nice, but we know for sure it will be ready to accept sixth graders by the fall of 2025. So we're just trying to align things along that timeline.
So is this like, am I getting all mixed up? Is this like a two-year then? Because we're at 23.
At this point, Connie, a great question, and I wouldn't consider it a two-year study. We hope, like Ben's mentioned, we hope to be able to make the decision. The thing that would be different is implementation may be delayed by a year. We would like to make all of those decisions as far as reconfiguration and Broadbank, along with everything else that we're talking about in the study by this coming December. But obviously, we cannot implement all of that until Cypress opens.
My question was kind of along that also. Do you know what building Broadbank Junior High would use?
No.
If they opened as a junior.
No, so the goal would obviously be to work with Dawn and his folks and Justin, if he comes back tomorrow, as part of that process. The goal is to identify, potentially looking at some of those boundary options and establish what those boundaries would be. And then that gives us lots of lead time to the fall of 2025 to be able to identify what the best options for those students to reside in. Dawn, do you want to comment on that at all?
Okay. And I would reemphasize too, some people have asked me, well, isn't it, why study it? Isn't this as simple as reversing the decisions we made a few years ago to open a Broadbank? And no, it's not. I mean, there, things have changed in the last four or five years. And so we'll study that and put, if necessary, that back together in the best way possible.
You can imagine, as part of your process, we try to clean out feeders in that process. We're looking at potential growth in the Little Valley area. There's going to be lots of things to take into consideration. I would also point out that just because our proposal is to study areas one and two, not every school within those areas will be involved with that study. We'll obviously be cleaning that up and honing in on some specific areas.
Thank you. Also, I, just point of information, like with the idea of reopening Broadbank, that tells me there's history there that I don't know about as a board member. At some point, I think you've got some other board members who were not here to understand all of that history, and I don't know that today is the day to go through that, but.
I can do it in two sentences.
Oh, okay.
The community requested reconfiguration. We could not fit ninth grade onto the current campus of Cypress High School. The community requested that they consolidate Broadbank into the Cypress campus and move all of their seventh and eighth graders to Matheson Jr. until the new building was completed. And Chris was part of that process. She was part of the community.
And then it got delayed several years. That was four sentences, Ben. Yeah. But it was a, there was a, it was a long process also to decide, but we were feeling like ninth grade, the benefits of having the ninth graders in the high school was the reason why we needed to go forward with that. And at the time, if I remember right, I think Cypress was going to be started probably about four years earlier than it actually did.
So it was always the plan to reopen Broadbank.
Yeah, and essentially, I think the important part here is that that was community-driven. And they really saw the value in the ninth grade moving over, and they understood kind of almost the sacrifice of moving everybody over to Matheson.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, this is an action item to accept the PAC's recommendation. So I will entertain a motion.
I motion that we accept the PAC's recommendation for, what should I say, for a boundary study for 2023.
I'll second.
All right, we've had a motion to accept the PAC's recommended study list for 2023, and we've had a second. Any other further discussion or comment? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you for your support.
Thanks. That was, that was a record. I can give Steve a hard time.
Five minutes, Steve, good job.
I'm impressed. All right, we are going to move on to a couple of information items we have. We have the Ed Equity Services here, David Gomez and your team.
I'm sorry, say that again. Rebecca.
Oh, Rebecca. Thank you. We're going to get some information from you guys. I know you've revamped some things, and so we're looking at what's going on. Turn the time over to you. Oh, and Board Members, if you will write down your questions and save it till the end, I think we just want to make sure that we get through this and are able to answer questions at the end.
Well, first of all, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. We are part of Leslie Bell's division within her fantastic team that she runs. And I do have Becky Barra here, who's the Associate Director in Ed Equity. And so we appreciate you giving us a little bit of time. We know it's going to be brief, but we were asked to kind of give you an idea of what the plan is for working with our multilingual learners throughout our district and how WIDA access test fits within that plan. And so we're going to do a quick overview of that. And I think at first, it's kind of nice to look at the why, and so I'm going to turn the time over to Becky to address that.
Thank you. Thanks for having us tonight. It's good to see you all. First of all, we want to look at the Department of Educational Equity, and you can see here on the slide that it says that we equip and empower schools to provide all students. We'd like to put emphasis on the all part of students in the district to meaningful and equal access to all educational programs. The number that stands out here for me is the 60,000 students, approximately 60,000 that we've got here rounded up, and you're looking at 20,000 of those students that are considered MLs, which are multilingual learners. We call these multilingual learners now MLs. They're no longer considered or referred to as ESL students or ELL students. They are ML students, meaning multilingual. We like to look at it that way because it gives them more of an asset-based perspective when they come in as opposed to a deficient. They come to us deficient? No, they come to us with multilingual skills here, and we're here to help them with that. Though, the other thing I wanted to point out very quickly is the FLOT student. It's kind of an awkward acronym there, but it just means the primary home language other than English. That you can see is a large percentage of our MLs. And then, of course, looking at our three charts with the 77% under the red circle, you can see those are our levels one through four. That's where the focus of our attention kind of goes towards because they are the ones who are in the most need. You can see there next to the levels five, six, and seven percent, and we do have 16% of our MLs who have exited the language programs. So again, just to focus on all of the students in Granite School District. And I'm going to turn this over to Dave to talk to you about how we need to make some changes.
It's always good to see the why, right, and comparison. We are a district that is minority majority, and we need to look at things a little bit different. A lot of good things have been put in place in the past, but I think expansion is what's needed at this point. So we take a three-pronged approach to that. We know what works with MLs. We've known that for well over 20 years or more. We want to look at changing the narrative while providing that support to build capacity within our buildings. And then couple that with empowering schools to become data users and not just data collectors. And we'll talk a little bit about that in this presentation. And so that's kind of what our approach is. It may not look at so much as a plan, but really a process that will help multilingual learners in our schools give those kids what they need. And so I want to talk about the what we know. We know what works. We've taken pieces from PSYOP, the eight components that PSYOP has, a research-based approach to what multilingual students need. And we've also looked at the WIDA framework. These are two frameworks that are very well-known, and we use those in Granite District to help train and build that capacity with our schools and our staff, whether that's teachers, paraprofessionals, whomever that might be, working with our students. We've been able to pull out a few items that we see are emphasis in our district, and that's continuing that increased interaction. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that, but you guys know the language is powerful. It's what helps us to be where we are today. I'm able to give this presentation and speak to you because I proudly am a product of Granite School District. I went to Woodrow Wilson, went to Bonneville Junior High, and I graduated from Cottonwood High School. I was fortunate to be able to give that power and learn that power of language through speaking abilities and, of course, writing. Those are some of our key pieces that we need to look at and improve on in our district. And so that's what we've pulled from what we know works with students. Now, how do we take that and look at ways to improve empowering schools so that they can feel that same response and we can give that same access to students in our building, all students, really?
Board President? May I? Just a question about Flashlight 360. There's just been some questions, what it is, how it's used, and actually, I believe a couple of Board Members may have had some questions about Flashlight 360. If you wouldn't mind just elaborating a little bit on that.
Yeah, if you're okay, we're going to touch on that in the last slide, if that's all right. And we'll go ahead and address that there, and then we'll entertain questions at that point. That's part of our accountability piece at the end, and so happy to do that. So we've put together our professional support teams, and this is what a team looks like. We have three of these teams. I put a link there so you can look at our webpage and see actual people that are part of these teams. Part of this team is an academic coach, and they're the ones that take these strategies, these framework, and implement it with people in our building, whether that's coaches, whether that's teachers, paras. That's primarily what their job is. Each team then is assigned to networks, high school, junior high, and elementary schools, and you'll find those on our webpage. Some of the things that I want to really focus on with our academic coaches is this piece. I mean, we've now done 69 PDs, over 1,000 people trained at this point. One of the pieces that we really need to look at when we want to change this narrative, right, of having schools take responsibility, all members of a school take responsibility, not just one ALP lead is what sometimes it ends up being, but all staff members. A way to do that is we have an ESL endorsement program, very well-run ESL endorsement program. Problem is, is it only allows for about 60 people throughout the year to get that ESL endorsement program. One of the things we're working on right now is to do a competency-based endorsement program that will be held within the school via the coach, and teachers can access this training virtually and do it at their own pace with a coaching component with it. And so we hope that that's going to give the ability for schools to look and say, like maybe a Cottonwood High School who's interested in looking into this this year, of being able to say, all right, I have 12 teachers who are interested in learning more about strategies that work with English language learners. I'd like to take them through this competency-based program. That's one of the things that we're working on. We then have a compliance coach that primarily now is working with our SIP programs, not programs, but our Continual Improvement Plan. And they're looking at WIDA testing plans that will be used throughout the school and planned by teams within the school. And so again, moving away from that one person in charge of everything ML in the school building to teams that are in charge of looking at how are we going to give the WIDA access test. Another member of the team is, of course, the ALP lead, and we're trying to focus on schools to go move beyond just an ALP lead and to turn them into teams. And we have schools already who are now formulating multilingual teams, and they're bringing team members from either a grade-level content area or in the secondary, it's those content level areas as well. And so that is something that will also change the narrative. We've now progressed, you know, and moved the TMI program so that it's in schools. We have outreach refugee newcomer workers that now go into the schools, help with bigger wraparound services with kids, not just with registration and getting them into classes, but working on protocols that we work with families, getting them basic things like, do you have an email? Can you access the parent portal? How do we give you access to look at checking on your students? Those kinds of things that sometimes we take for granted are what is being worked with these team members through the TMI program. We're seeing some great things. We've started a student ambassador program in four different schools where students now are being trained to help other refugee and newcomer kids and share their experiences and stories with them and creating that capacity, building that capacity, as I mentioned before. And we do have other members of the team that you can look at at a later time. Now, let's see. How do I progress this? Maybe Becky, you can, yeah. And so the next piece, I think you have to go out and pick the next slide. What I want to talk about is wrapping it up into how do we create this capacity? Thanks, Ben. And that is the accountability piece. We've now been able to take the DOJ fact sheet and Department of Ed and put that into our Continual Improvement Plan, our SIP. There are coaches in that professional learning team, look at and work with administrators and their leadership teams to ask questions, to look at, are we giving access to kids everywhere in our curriculum? And so those are the things that we're, and we've worked with Aaron and his folks, and it's been a really good collaborative event. We tie Title III funding to the SIP, so when people want to look at asking for money. III funding to the SIP, so when people want to look at asking for money, it's tied to a mini grant that is tied to what their plan looks like, sounds like, and is going to be in their school. We also, for the first time, have a platform that we're using called Elevation, and I think Superintendent and I use this in Ogden. And it's the first time that we've had in Granite District, a platform where we are looking at collecting what we're doing with ESL MLs in our district. This gives, and there's a video there that I don't have time to show you, but I encourage you to look at it. It's about a two-minute video. You can look at it later on. But really, it gets that information to the teacher's finger right in their classroom. They can look at what their own students can do, based off the WIDA can do, and it'll also show them what they could work towards. It can have goal-setting there. Take the opportunity to also not just be a platform for data, but it also has trainings modules that teachers can do on their own, or administrators can assign them to these training modules that is for their own kids in their classroom, right there on the platform. It also has another piece where they can look at activities that are being collected from all over the country, and this is a powerful piece that will help create that collective environment. Flashlight now is then a progress monitoring program that, we're the only district using it in the state of Utah at this time. But basically, it gets to the speaking and writing that I mentioned earlier. Essentially, what it is, and there is a video that you can play, it's a one-minute video as well. Basically, this is what it is. It pulls up a picture for a student to look at, and then they go ahead on the computer and put down words that they know of the scene that they're seeing. For example, could be a classroom, a science class. They get on there, and they put words of what they know. Then, they have to speak about the picture, so it gives them an opportunity to talk. It's recorded, and then they write about it. And then the teacher at a given moment then can go back and grade it. But the bigger piece to this is that they give them feedback. That's where the change comes and where kids can start to learn. And so, teachers can give this to students on a weekly basis, two-week basis, but it's a progress monitoring system that we've never had before. We've only really had the WIDA testing that we only give once a year. And so, this gives teachers an opportunity to see growth in those two pieces, speaking and writing, on an ongoing basis. And so, it's a progress monitoring program. That really helps us to get to that building capacity. So, I know I went quick. I know there was questions about Flashlight 360. Are there still questions about that product or progress monitoring system, or any other questions that you might have?
Okay, go ahead, Julie.
On the first slide there, you showed there were a lot of students who were in the levels one through four. And, yeah, what was that, 16% that exit? And I'm really interested in that number. Like, do we have any idea? I'm sure it's very individual, but overall, what do we expect of, you know, how long does it take a child from coming to us, say, with no English, to exit? Do we have any data on that?
Yeah, and it varies from...
It's just too variable.
Too variable, but the guideline is it takes about five to seven years to acquire a language. That's about the range.
I also would add to that, Julie, is that in the past, we've not had the platforms that we have now that are available to our teachers. And as a teacher, to be able to have access to the data and the ongoing monitoring process is going to help them put back into their hands what the students' needs are specifically. So, I think it's going to be a quicker turnaround now, now that we have these utilities.
I agree, and I really appreciate that you guys are looking at this problem and saying, okay, how are we going to solve this, and trying to get some solutions and some tools in our teachers' hands. And I also just wondered, it looks like we have a semi-strong program in getting ESL endorsements for our teachers. Where is that funding coming from?
Yeah, that's coming from the Title III grant that we get from the state. So, we use that to...
And it funds 60 teachers per year to get that?
It does. Yep. And we use those same funds to incorporate the competency-based endorsement program that I talked about as well.
And so, the competency, when you use the competency-based system, will you be able to endorse more teachers?
Yes.
And will the endorsement mean that now they're endorsed, but they really already had information, like they already had the skills they need, or will it mean that they will be getting new skills?
Yeah. Part of the competency is can you show what we need you to show, and goal-set as a teacher with your coach, and then that's how you build this type of a program, if that makes sense. So, it's you show me what you know, and then what you don't know, I'll fill in those blanks with training and with coaching sessions.
That's how I want it to work in our schools.
Well, we hope it's going to work. It's always a...
I mean, for our students. That's how I want proficiency learning to work. And do you feel that the program, as we have it set up for ESL endorsement, is meeting the demand in a reasonable way?
Not as we currently have it, no.
But with proficiency-based, the proficiency-based certification, yes?
Yep. That's why we've got to look to expand how we're training teachers and how we're equipping them to, you know, look at it as a school-wide issue, rather than this is just for the ESL or ELD classes. No, it's for everyone, whether you're teaching science, English, whatever that might be.
So, I just want to make sure. So, what I'm saying is, do you feel that by making this adjustment, that you're now able to bite off a bigger part of the problem, or do you feel like you're going to be able to solve the problem? Not solve the problem, but...
Well, not only bite off a bigger, get more teachers trained, but it also...
That's the problem I'm talking about, getting the right teachers.
This will do that. But what it'll also do is it'll keep it in their school. So, the training will be working with their kids, their coach...
Oh, that's cool.
...in their school, in their environment.
Cool. Thanks a lot.
Yeah. I just had a quick question about your mini grants you were talking about. Do the teachers apply for those in there, or the...
No. Administrators through their leadership team, we hope, will apply for those. And it's not a huge amount, but it can help with basic pieces that they need. Yeah.
And I like the team approach a lot, because I feel like sometimes that's, you know, the whole school needs to be on board with a lot of that process. And also, I have had some of my secretaries, BHAs, different people in our schools say that they wish they knew some Spanish or some language to have some communication skills also. I know that's the flip side of this, but is that part of maybe having the whole school on board with this, is maybe to have some of that, maybe just even little in-house?
Yeah, not to teach language, but we now have translation devices that are really going to help with that. We have an app now that we're using Language Line that you can pull up. And so, if an office worker needed to speak with somebody and they speak Swahili, you can get right on your phone now, click the app, put in that you need a Swahili translator. They'll come over the phone virtually or by voice and help you immediately. And so, those are pieces that we're adding as well. And that's a credit to Leslie and what she's done with our teaming. We have folks in our division who really work well together, and I've worked with other divisions, too. And I really like that collaborative effort, and a credit to her for really wanting that to take place at a higher level.
Thanks, Leslie. That's a great piece.
I appreciate what you're trying and what the goals that you have. I have administered the WIDA test before, and the saddest thing to me is to see a child get three of the four, and then next year have to take all of it all over again. And by the time we get to high school, these kids have had it so often, to try and get them to come take the test is such a problem. But I appreciate so much that, just the direction that you're taking it, and that these teachers really do have the resources to help these children. And of course, the younger they are, they get it because they're speaking English with their friends, and that's always, you know, you really hope that out of the 77%, they can get out while they're in elementary school. There's no sense.
Well, thank you for the kind words. And we do have a spot on our team to help us with the WIDA testing, so we'll give you a call to help us with that. But we're seeing some really good things, like with our Tumanyi program, for example, we're seeing high schools that now are looking at creating newcomer classes within their school. And our teams and our coaches are helping to train them. They're also now writing standards for the newcomer classes. And so, it's going to take some time, but really, building that capacity is what we hope to do. And hopefully, we work ourselves out of a job so that we really don't need an equity department. Equity is infused everywhere. So, thank you. I know...
Connie, I wanted to just address really quickly there what you said about giving the teachers that, empowering the teachers. I think what happened here just recently is we had a new refugee liaison come into my office, actually, and he said, I just have to tell you something. And I was a little bit worried, and he says, today was the best day of my life. And I said, oh, my gosh, oh, it was not. Today was just one day, and tomorrow's going to be another, and another after that, and each one of those days is going to be the best day of your life, because you're right where you need to be. He said that he went into a school, and he was just there to introduce himself and make himself known, and the administrator was there in the building, and a counselor was working with a student who seemed to be struggling. A family was there that was very, I guess, distraught that they couldn't communicate correctly, and they were wanting to get some help. And right away, he just stepped right in, and he says that it just made him feel like he was at home. The little boy spoke his language, Swahili, which is really strange that it would be that language, but he was able to meet with him, and things went really well. He was able to exchange his information with the family, and the family were so grateful. And our liaison was just thrilled. He said he felt like he was at home. And I told him, I says, you know, what you did was really great. And I was telling Dave about it, and I says, it's like, these kids are out there drowning, and we're trying to keep them afloat, and these liaisons will go out there, and this particular one was able to rescue the child, you know? And I think how awesome that is. But more than that is I really want, and what Dave's saying here with building capacity, is to let the students and the schools know themselves, from the leadership team to the community councils, to all students that we talked about, was to let them know that the teachers in that building, and the administrators in that building, and all of those adults in that building are also wearing those life jackets. They are also wearing them. I think that the problem here that's not made the connection is that those life jackets haven't been inflated. So, they're there. And so, with our help and our teams going in there, and we can teach them, and not just to inflate them, but to teach them how to inflate them themselves and put these life vests on, they can go out there and save these students. And not just the liaisons, but as a school, and going back to Dave's building capacity. The responsibility of these students is not the alternative language program lead teacher, is not the administrator, is not the ed equity department. It's the responsibility of every person in that building to help these students succeed. And I think that once we get that out there and to the help of our teams, we're going to meet these needs over time.
Thank you.
I had a couple of real quick questions. Did you have any, Kim? Go ahead.
Just a really brief clarification for myself. I think some of these terms that we're using are a little new. I just wanted to clarify. You have on that, on the team slide, you separate out, like refugees versus newcomers. Newcomers, you're referring to just new students to the district, new ML students in general? That encompasses refugees as well, but then we separate refugees out specifically?
Yeah, well, we're using, you go ahead, Dave.
Yeah. Refugee has its separate definition for it, all right? And newcomers are students who don't meet that definition, but are new to our country...
Still need services.
...and still need those types of services. They are a little bit different, but still the same. We've separated them because many of our newcomers that come into our district are from countries that speak Spanish. And so, on each one of these teams, we have a Spanish-speaking outreach liaison that can go in and help with those wraparound services. Does that help a little bit?
And the refugees are being tracked as well, as far as grants go and stuff. So, we're keeping, you know, track of the refugees specifically for the IRC and the CCS, different agencies that send them our way.
That makes sense. Thank you. That's all I...
Just real quick. So, as far as the Flashlight 360, you said that teachers assign it. I assume in high school, they have a class, because I've gone and helped out with the class. Do they have that engineer high as well? And who does that in the elementary schools? Who's assigning this?
Yeah, so it could be in elementary, it could be the teacher, could be an aide that does that. It could be an interventionist that assigns that to kids. That's the beauty of it, is it could be multiple people doing that, assigning. In the secondary, it then becomes, could be a class, could be if they have a, it could be a coach in a building. And so, that's the beauty of it, is it can be assigned to, from different types of people. We're also starting to use it with our Latinos in Action program, where they go and help students in the elementary school. They're taking Flashlight with them to work with kids and walk them through that process as a help for them and to help them with that feedback, right, and creating that student-to-student teacher, teaching moment that we need to capitalize on as well.
Is there a standard as far as we expect them to be tested once a week, once a month?
We're still working on that. It's so new and fresh that really, honestly, we're one of about, I don't know, maybe 10 districts throughout the country that are using the product. I hope that at some other point in a year or so, or sooner, we can give you an update on that.
Well, at least they're being introduced to it right now, too, and getting used to that, so that hopefully it will spread.
Thank you. The other question, and I think I know the answer, but I just wanted to double-check. How many years do they need to be, isn't it a Level VI before they can graduate from the program, graduate?
Yeah, they're adjusting that now, a little bit at the state level. But yeah, it's about that, approximately six.
So, they have to be at a Level VI for one year or for two?
I believe it's...
It's a five, six for two years.
Yeah, two years.
And then they just do monitoring.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I thought was two years. So, if they, this is the hard part. They let me take one of the tests. I took a practice test, and it was painful. So, I understand some of these Level VI kids and their hesitancy to do it, because if they're there for two years, is there any talk of being able to...
Unfortunately, we don't, we don't have any say in WIDA and what the state uses as that progress monitoring product tool. But we can bring it up. Yeah.
I just wonder if they've taken that test, if they understand it?
No, but my daughter, they tried to get my daughter to take it in another district, not as good as our district.
Of course not.
And it was kind of hilarious that she had to take it, and no, she did not pass it. But we're working on it at home, so...
Good to know. All right. Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Sorry, we took a little bit more time than we were supposed to.
I think we budgeted you for half an hour, and I think you did it, so thank you. We got it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have our comprehensive guidance plan. Judy and company.
It's great to be here.
Thank you.
So, I'm Judy Peterson, the Director of College and Career Readiness Department, all things related to school counseling, social work, Latinos in Action that was mentioned here, our MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Support, behavior supports, positive behavior intervention and supports for our schools, PBIS, and all things great and wonderful for kids. I'd like my team members who are here to stand up and be recognized, and Kay and I. And we're part of the Student Learning and Supports Division under Leslie Bell's leadership, and we're excited to share with you our information. I have here on my left an amazing professional, Kay Poulton-Tim, and she is the coordinator for our school counselors and our comprehensive counseling program. She and I work closely together, and I am giving her this opportunity to walk you through a formal presentation at the 30,000-foot level of our school counseling program that is required by the State Board of Education, that we report out and share out on our counseling program. The last couple of years, we've done that just strictly through a consent agenda item. The last couple of years, we've done that just strictly through a consent agenda item. And tonight, we've got both. So, Kay, take it away.
Well, good evening, President McDermott, members of the board, Superintendent Nye, members of our superintendency and guests. So in this position as College and Career Readiness Coordinator, I've had the privilege of supporting and providing training for over 100 counselors who serve over 33,000 of our secondary students every day. Every year, we choose a theme and that our counselors can weave into their goals, their presentations, their messaging for the year. This year's theme is Be Here, Be You, and Belong. We hope that you enjoy the reminders of our theme that we've placed at your table.
Thank you.
You're so welcome. So thank you for the opportunity to present. This really, as Judy said, this really broad overview of our comprehensive school counseling in Granite School District, which has been a part of Granite School District for the last 31 years. Now, while I wasn't a school counselor during the infancy of this framework, I was actually teaching at the time, Judy was integral in bringing this comprehensive approach to the work of school counselors. She collaborated closely with Dr. Norm Geisberg, who is the father of this framework, and along with the Board of Education. And 31 years ago, Granite was in the pilot for comprehensive school counseling. And in 1992, we officially adopted this. And our counselors, through the comprehensive work that they do, impact every student. They motivate, they inspire, teach, support, advocate for all students, and work closely with parents, teachers, administrators, and other staff to support our academic success. Our foundation is a comprehensive framework. This allows each school team to customize the work that they do to meet the needs of their school. The work is supported through a comprehensive framework of recommendations and a number of resources that include financial, that supports personnel and materials, access to data that we use to inform our work, as well as partnerships to provide additional supports for events like a FAFSA completion night, for instance, and long-standing support from legislation, our Utah State Board of Education, our local board, PTA, and our Utah System of Higher Ed. In putting together this presentation, we realized it's been a while since we've been in front of you. And in fact, probably before many of you were even elected to your position. So first of all, congratulations for winning your elections. Our framework recommends that 85% of a school counselor's time be spent in direct contact with students. This slide explains a little bit about those big buckets that fill a school counselor's time. So as we start with individual planning, which is really planning for college and career readiness, it's really the bulk of the work that we do. Counselors meet individually with students and parents every year to talk about their goals, future plans, identify barriers, develop course-taking plans that match with the student's identified interest and goals. The collaborative classroom instruction allows counselors to share information with all students, to build foundational skills and knowledge. This information supports building awareness of careers, college, knowledge, opportunities in Granite, such as the GTI, how to pay for college through scholarships and FAFSA, suicide awareness and prevention, and including Safe UT, and then other supports that we have available to students. Our responsive service has a focus on dropout prevention, and it addresses the immediate concerns and needs of our students and families. As you can imagine, our student concerns are as broad and varied as our, as our students. Counselors then need to know a wide range of information, including what are the resources we have in Granite, which are varied and amazing, and those also in the community. As we look at these topics where, you know, our, our kids come in front of us and they want to talk to us about how to talk to teachers. They may also address concerns of safety or even meeting basic needs. Anything comes across, as you heard in our video from Dan, anything comes across our table and we cannot be surprised by it. And our main focus is to support that student's academic success. It's also important that counselors remain up to date with the ever-changing workforce demands and information, college information. And so counselors attend professional learning. They also are finding and evaluating data to inform our decisions. They're being a voice at the table in meetings and collaborating with teachers, administrators, networks, and even their school teams. This falls in that fourth area known as our system support. All of these areas combined are ways in which counselors support all of the students in Granite. So, speaking of data, these are just a few of the metrics that counselors review yearly. This data shows only a yearly snapshot and trend lines of where counselors' work has an impact. This does not reflect all of the data that counselors may use to inform the work that they do to support students. And as you can see, we in Granite have made some significant progress in some areas and have some work to do in others. So State Board rule recommends that we have a 1 to 350 student counselor ratio as a district. Through Granite's support, your support, and through our leadership, as well as additional support from individual principals who evaluate the impact of a school counselor, we've been able to lower those ratios significantly. We currently have 103 full-time counselors, with other support coming from hourly or part-time school counselors. That means that our counselors are getting closer to the nationally recommended ratio of 1 to 250, from the, which is from the American Council, American School Counselor Association. But more importantly, counselors are better able to support students' individual needs when they're able to get to know the unique circumstances of each of our students and meet with every student every year in an individual planning meeting. So thank you, Board, for your support. School counselors hold a unique position in our schools, as you've heard and, and know. They help students dream big, build on the skills that they haven't acquired yet, and are the voice for those that have not yet found theirs. They help students be here, be you, and belong. So thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for?
I have a quick question on the, on the slide that, at the ratios of, I think it was 1 to 285 and then 1 to 333. Is, is there, I mean, in, in a world of limited resources like we're at, is that the best allocation, so to speak? That there's a lower ratio for the junior high versus the high school? Or where do we, where do you believe that ratio should be in the, in the finite resources situation?
Yeah, so we staff, our, our ratio that we use here in Granite is 1 to 389. The requirement or the expectation from USBE, the State Board of Education, is 1 to 350. So we have to use our magic to bring that down. We will, we have made an agreement in Granite School District that we'll never have fewer than two counselors at a junior high and never fewer than four at a high school. And so then we're able to use some funds to augment and enhance that. The junior high appears to be a little bit lower because we have junior high principals who are adding money to support purchasing additional counselor time. They can purchase a .5 FTE or a full FTE with additional funding sources that they have. With the high schools, we have, we have additional supports to help our counselors that the junior highs don't have. We have the Career Center coordinators that Karen pointed out. We also have a college access advisor that's funded through the state legislature in each one of our high schools. So while their ratio is a little bit higher, we have additional supports at the high schools that the junior highs don't have. And then our, our goal is prevention. And what can we do earlier on? And identifying the needs and supports kids need earlier on, we put our emphasis on junior high. Superintendent, sorry, go.
Oh, no apology necessary.
Okay.
I would, I would agree with that. And I would say, given the phenomenal work that our, our counselors do day in and day out, they take on a lot of different responsibilities. But there's also this growing need that we see in our schools where our licensed clinical social workers are a big need. And there's a ratio there that's recommended nationally of 1 to 250 students, one licensed clinical social worker to 250 students. And if you think school psychologists, they play a critical role as well. And that's about 1 to 500 is what is recommended on, on a national scale. And so sometimes the things that our counselors are being asked to do is carry some, some pretty heavy loads. And as we recognize and prioritize, if there were unlimited resources, yeah, we would certainly meet this, this ratio. But we're also engaging with those that can help us do that in the legislature to be able to determine how that help and support might look like. So the counselor can focus on maybe some of those things that a social worker, or not focus on those things that maybe could be directed to a social worker or to a school psychologist, just to be able to shore up what is that primary responsibility is. But we sure appreciate our counselors and the work that you do and how you lead that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, I know, you know, you already took the time to answer me in writing, and I think the Board's aware of your response, but just for the purpose of public hearing as well, in case anyone was looking at this statistics slide and looking at the, you know, progress or lack of progress we've made in various areas, would you mind addressing that just for the public for some of the reasons why some areas we may not show a whole lot of progress right now or like improvement toward our goals?
You got, you want to? No, go ahead. Yeah, I appreciate you reaching out, Kim. So as Kay mentioned, these are data points that inform our work. And it really does take an entire school district, an entire school system, to move the needle, so to speak, in any one of these areas. And in our, in Leslie, as Leslie and I responded to your question specifically, you know, it gave me opportunity to really reflect on the data. And I thought, you know, with the changing dynamics of Granite School District, if you look at that bottom score of an ACT composite of 18 and holding steady for six years, I mean, going on six years, that's, that's very good, recognizing that we've had COVID in the middle of that, the needs of our students have changed, the demographic of our population has changed. And not to give excuses, but to say our instruction is holding steady. When you look at the graduation requirement, if we were to go back even a couple of years, our graduation rate was in the 60%. And so to think that we've been able to move that to now almost 80% graduation rate, wow, that's a huge celebration. Would we like 100? Yes. But the variable is we have individual students and their families that have opportunity to make decisions about their kids' experiences in school that sometimes we're not aware of. And it's hard to, you know, to balance all of that. As far as the AP exams, we took a little bit of a dip this past year. And I think that's because a lot of our kids are seeing the value added to their school experience with the concurrent enrollment class. And kids can now earn an education certificate through concurrent enrollment, which is, it's really power, one year, powerful, one year of college before they graduate from high school. When you look at our college enrollment fall semester, everybody took a dive in that 2020 year because most of our colleges and universities were saying, "Hey, come to our school," or any training programs. Even our CTE, Applied Technology Training Programs were like, "Yeah, come to us and we'll give you a great virtual experience." Well, the kids were done with that. And I think, you know, that really is borne out by that 41% taking a dip. But now we're climbing back up there. So, I mean, it's all relative, but really does give us opportunity to reflect, to discuss, and really help our system pay attention to and make adjustments and changes as we move forward to, you know, increase. We put those, those goals out there. We started focusing in on the 90% graduation rate in 2017. We're getting there. So, I appreciate your, your questions.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I just wanted, for anyone else who might have been like me, having that same question to hear what you had explained to me, so I appreciate that. Thanks, Kim. Connie?
On the college enrollment fall semester, those are just those that attend Utah State? I mean, the-
Across the country.
You think are able to do it across?
Yeah, we have, we're part of a national system. It's called the Student Clearinghouse. It's not the NCAA Clearinghouse. It's the College and Career Readiness Clearinghouse. And coming up, I think in the next year or two, they're going to include our ATCs in that number as well. So that we'll know not just our kids who are going to a community college or one of our four-year institutions, but also our colleges of applied technology. And that's going to be really cool.
Any other questions, thoughts, comments? Is there any talk of changing that AP exam's given to, or, or advanced courses taken as far as-
Yes. We have that data. We just didn't include it on this slide.
Okay, I just didn't know if that goal was going to be modified at some point to say, mm.
Yeah. It may just flip its way to a different direction. We, the CTE department keeps track of all concurrent enrollments and maybe we can share that out with you. And so you'll have that really as a gauge, too. And then just the emphasis we're putting on introducing kids to pathways and pursuing pathways with apprenticeships built into that and all sorts of data pieces that we could bore you with.
I, I think that's a, a very valuable, pathways is a huge thing, I think, for a lot of these kids, especially that may not, you know, four-year college is not attainable in any way for them in, in their mind. And I think a pathway is such a valuable experience, so. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do as well. All right. We're going to have an exhilarating conversation about the calendar. And Ben's going to lead this. No. Shawna, are you?
And Craig.
We're going to leave the calendar discussion after you.
You, you're going to miss out on a great, a great one.
Thank you.
Hi, President McDermott, Board members, Superintendent Nye and superintendency, we're grateful to be here. We are here to present the findings from the survey that was distributed for the month of January. Just a review of, from the first survey that was given back in October. This shows the weighted averages and shows that, again, the most important thing to many people was to have a longer winter break. Just wanted to remind you of that. And then on our next one, just a couple of things, given in both English and Spanish. It was open from January 5th through January 27th and then sent to parents, employees, and students. And a reminder was given on January 19th for anybody that hadn't taken it. For the questions, we provided a link to the former presentation so that anybody could review that. We asked just a few questions on this one. What group do you fall in? What high school network do you belong to? And then which calendar option did you prefer? You'll remember from last time, we had calendar option D and E, and we switched them to A and B to avoid any confusion and with that. So here's the slide that shows the relationship of who's taken the survey. We had 14% of our students, 50%, We had 14% of our students, 52% of those that took the survey were parents, 25% were employees, and 9% were parents and employees.
We then disaggregated that data for you by network. So you could see how many responses came from each network. We felt really good about the responses. We had almost 700 from Cottonwood all the way up to over 1,200 with Skyline. And then the 1,119 that were either those that chose not to identify a network or from districts. And then we also wanted to separate that based on option. You can see that it's fairly close, a total of 4,506 responses for calendar B, 4,080 responses for calendar A. We did want to disaggregate that based on different groups. So parents identified calendar A as their first choice, employees, parents and employees, and students identified calendar B. Some other information by network, and this one, if you look down at the data, it looks like that the schools on the east side had a preference of a calendar A. Each of the schools on the west side had a preference for calendar B. Some of the major differences between those calendars, just as a reminder, calendar A, we start later, which means we then, of course, end later. Calendar B is the opposite, start a little bit earlier, but we end right before June begins. And then fall break is the week after the term ends for option A, and it actually aligns with the term end for option B. Winter breaks are the same. Spring break aligns with the end of the term in option A, and it's kind of in the middle of April for option B. The terms are fairly equal in option A. And with the semester ending right before the winter break on calendar B, it does make it so that our terms three and four are a little bit longer overall. And I think Nicole had mentioned something about the last week of school when we talked about that. Finally, we have those two options with the percentages that we would like to present to you for discussion and approval.
Thanks for keeping it short, you guys. Kay, I know Julie, you want to just dive right in? Do you?
I needed some time to just kind of gather my thoughts. Okay, well, let's just get to that. Let's move ahead. Could you discuss with me the, why we take all the professional development days or what we are calling on this thing T slash TCD days and kind of spreading them out through the year rather than putting them at the beginning or the end of the year, which in my mind is, has spread out our calendar from beginning to end. So we either have to extend further into June or further into August. Does that make sense?
Sure. And that's really a negotiated thing. Ben, do you want to speak to that?
And wait, just for anyone who's listening, that's because we have added from the past, how many professional development days did we add?
I actually was going to ask and see if Rick or John wanted to kind of give us some background on that.
Is this working? Yes? Yeah, good. Okay, so we have more contract days for teachers than we do have school days for students. And in past years, we bookended those days. So we'd put them all at the start of the year. And you'll remember, even as, because our calendars are set farther in advance, even as far back as two years ago, we bookended a couple of days at the end of the school year. We wanted to place days, we did it last year and now this year strategically to offer opportunities for professional learning intervals and opportunities for planning intervals. So each of those days are a half day of professional learning efforts and a half day of instructional planning for teachers. So the idea, rather than bookending those, of building them into the schedule, is to just give intervals of revisiting what you're working on in your professional learning and intervals of time for planning and preparation.
Do we know what our, that our teachers prefer this method?
Looking out in the audience to help us respond to that.
Yeah, they actually asked for this instead of doing our former way of receiving professional learning, which was a bookending. And they also didn't like necessarily the 90 minutes that we used to do after school day, which is what we were doing previously. So this was the preferred method.
Yeah, I would think that especially our elementary teachers appreciate the planning time that this offers in intervals.
Yeah, are the grading days negotiated into the contract? I mean, I know they are, that we need to have them, but the days, like, do they need to be the day after the end of term in the contract?
So in addition to the days we were just discussing, there's also a day at the end of every term.
I never put my grades off till the last day. I do.
Yeah. And at the end of, in addition to those days, there's also end of term SNAD days, which are also half-day professional learning, half-day instructional planning and prep. Oftentimes, we call those doing my grades in that afternoon.
I have, Julie, I can speak. Some feedback I've received from teachers is they actually really enjoy having that day to look forward to. You know, oftentimes, we talk about like the mental health of our students, but I think it's important to keep the mental health of our teachers because, look, whether or not they save their grades till the last day, they are still pushing really hard to get through content, get everything in. And so perhaps they're delaying their grades because they're just working so hard to get everything else in. Perhaps they just aren't on top of it, whatever the reason. But if they have that day or that half a day to know that they have that time set aside, I think we got to think of their, that's really nice. It's like if you know you're going out to dinner and all day long, you don't have to say, you don't have to think about what I have to make for dinner. So if they can have that last final push in the last week or two of the term, and they know that they've got that afternoon to use for their personal time, I just think that takes a load off of their shoulders. So I personally see the benefit, but I understand what you're kind of getting at, but I think the teachers really do benefit that.
I also think it's really beneficial to have that because you have to go back to school on Monday and start the next term, and you better be prepared. So you need that too. I don't want to, if there are other comments, I don't want to keep hogging the microphone. I do have other questions.
Clark, do you have any comments, questions? Karen, did you have anything else that you had in particular to these comments or anything?
I know which one I like, but is that what you're wanting me to? Well, I don't have any questions.
Chris, do you have anything?
I don't have some teachers that were very grateful for the survey, so thank you. They really like having that input and some say, and they wanted me to thank you guys, so.
I would like to point out, this was one of our most highest participation rates that we've seen in recent years. So 8,000 responses, pretty good.
Connie, did you have anything?
No.
Or Kim?
Okay, so it really is me. Okay, next question is that one of the, I read through the comments on the surveys, and one of the people said, there's no data that shows that having more time before the tests helps kids do better on their AP tests. And I just wondered if we do have data on that. Do we know that, because that's one of our, that's one of our kind of, you know, philosophies, I think, that we don't want to get out in the middle of June because we would rather have our kids have more time to prepare with their teachers before they take important high-stakes tests, which whether we like them or not, they are high stakes and they do impact our lives.
I would say that, have we ever correlated outcomes on AP exams and RICE tests to the calendar and how many days of preparation they had in advance? The answer is no. There's a logical inference there that the more time we have to prepare and provide instruction, that there's a clear correlation between outcomes. So that's my response to that.
And I think we could anecdotally also look at, take just attendance in general and our knowledge of how attendance connects with achievement.
Yes. I would point out, I also read all the comments, and I appreciated each and every one of them. But some of those comments inferred that we also could somehow magically fit 180 days of instruction within Labor Day and Memorial Day. And with all due respect, that's not possible, so.
It would be, but we wouldn't get Christmas off, right?
That is correct. Or weekends.
I did see many, 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 many comments. As I was looking at the comments, the biggest concern was starting earlier in August. And many people who were requesting a calendar that they could vote on where they started later in August and then, no, they started after Labor Day and then ended into June. And I just wanted to, there were so many comments on that, that I, I just wanted to recommend that that be considered next year. Not that I'm saying I demand a calendar like that for next year's survey, but I know you consider that every year, but this seems to have, maybe it's because we're pushing it further and further back, that people are saying, let us vote on this. And it would be interesting to see what they think.
I would say that we can absolutely look into that. This year's calendar, actual calendar, provided some unique challenges. If you look at that winter break, it's the same for each of the calendars.
I saw that.
And you see the way that that's set up, it's really hard to get in a few extra days before Christmas. And then looking at the backend of that holiday, trying to get back in time, we all know that two days is not really great instructional opportunities coming back from a break. And so I think there are better opportunities when Christmas is not, that holiday is not lined up the way that it is in this particular calendar year.
It's amazing, and I think I said this last month, the day that Christmas, whatever day Christmas falls on, you wouldn't think that that has such a power over the calendar, but it really does because you look, it's on a Wednesday, you know, for this calendar. And so, you know, you're dealing with two-day weeks if you come back there, you know. So you look at these, this winter break, and to me, it just seems enormous. But it is the same on either day. But I look at it and I'm like, well, I don't know what I would do different either. Because if you do a two-day week anywhere, kids, they're just not going to come back.
We'll struggle with attendance. We'll see other issues. And I think there was a disparate on some of our networks on the calendar preference. And I think that actually plays directly into it because some of those families, as we saw in the weighted average, prefer such a long winter break. They like to go do activities and do a variety of things. I think that's why they chose one preference over the other.
And as we get kids, especially our Latino kids that have some of those traditions, usually January 6th is a very, a very important date to them. So sometimes we see, especially as we increase that population in our district, we're going to see some of those kids not come back until after January 6th.
That's a good point.
Having them come back, and I hate, I hate having them come back on the 2nd anyway, but even having them come back on the 2nd this day is, I just think that's something that we need to, we need to be mindful of as well as our, as our demographics change here in this district.
For sure. One of the comments that I think we've all received is gratitude from our teachers for having a teacher workday when we come back from winter break. And one of the teachers commented, I'm assuming it was a teacher, "Teacher contract days are best placed immediately after break rather than immediately before a break, just for future reference." And I thought that comment was interesting because I did see that this moment where we gave them a workday after break, they loved it. And I, whether or not we change it here, I just, I think that would be an interesting comment to follow up on. I'm not sure that I feel like we have the data here to know that that is what teachers prefer, but it would be interesting to see what they think about that.
It's important to note, too, that some of those questions, we, I mean, the calendar committee is in communication with the GEA.
I know, but look at Michelle nodding her head.
Right.
She hadn't thought of that until this teacher wrote it down.
Right.
You know? No, I think they knew.
Oh, I wanted to be the one to point it out.
No, that's my point, Julia. She's out there nodding because she's, that feedback is already ongoing.
I think I just want to say that I feel personally very conflicted about this. My community cares a lot about the calendar. I hear about the calendar by far more than probably any other issue in my area. And you can see by the amount of, the Skyline and Olympus networks have the far, have the highest amount of respondents to this survey. And they, my community clearly picks calendar A. And when I read their comments, their comments are, please don't start so early in August because we love August, because we do all of our family activities, and we have vacations, and it's beautiful weather outside. I literally think that was the reason that every single person put. And I also appreciate those things. And I want my community to know that I'm going to be voting for calendar B, which is not what they, what they are all asking for on the survey. And the reason that I'm voting for calendar B is not that I love skipping all of my August. I do not love starting early in August either. And I feel like I'm talking to my community right now. I do not love starting in August either. And I know that I will be on everyone's crap list for voting for this. But my job here is to make sure that I'm doing everything I can to help our students succeed and achieve. And this calendar, calendar B, does, serves that purpose better than calendar A. And so I'm going to vote for calendar B. And I'm going to ask my community to sacrifice that extra time in August so that our kids can do better in school. It's not just that one week in August, it's a lot of other things. It's, it's ending in, ending term two in December. And it's not having so much time after all of our high-stakes tests. And so I just wanted to explain that to my community.
I move that we approve calendar B.
I second.
Okay, we've had a motion to approve calendar B and a second. Is there any further discussion or comments?
I don't like calendar B, and I've always gone for it's okay to go into June, so I will vote against.
And Connie, just, I usually am, you know, that I'm, but for calendar B, I did also look at it really carefully as far as the AB days and where those fall. And to me, you have less of the A or the B days where then you come back and you've got five days until you get to another, you know, you've got almost a week before you see your A-day kids again. Calendar B has less of those days to me. I just wanted to point that out. But anyway, all right, so we've had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. So we have two noes and five yeses on calendar B. Is there, for those of you, because we have this come back as a second reading, correct? Or was this, yes, we have this come back as a second reading?
This is the second reading. Is that what you just asked?
This is the second reading.
This is the second reading?
This is. Yes, we just bring it back in the March meeting as an item, and we just present calendar B again. I will, I would make mention, the survey results are close enough that, obviously, we don't have a preference up here. We're working 243-day contracts no matter what, so it's not a big deal to us. But I know it's a big deal to your patrons and to your, to our employees. So frankly, just your comments are just, it was picking a poison, right? So just know we're going to.
I don't like either calendar.
Yeah. The numbers don't lie, and those numbers up there reflect some divisiveness there. I would prefer that it was like 60% one way or the other. That would make these decisions a lot easier, so just heads up.
Okay.
So Ben, what's going to happen? We'll just get calendar B for an approval?
It'll be an action item for next month's board meeting.
So it'll come back as a second reading. So if you have questions or concerns, in the meantime, please reach out. Okay.
Are you telling me I have another month to stew over this? Is that what you just said? I have another month to stew over this?
Just to clarify, that's not a second reading next time, right? It's just a?
It's just a, yeah, that's what.
Is it required two readings or is this a final reading? I thought the calendar was a final one and done.
That's a great question. Because you brought up last month, and then this would be. Because you brought it last month and then this would be the second time.
Because I thought last month is presented, it's voted on always in February and then.
We just voted to accept both calendars.
Yeah, we, we voted, we voted in.
Right, so la- last month was just.
We didn't have it last month.
No, no, I'm just saying, I thought it was only one approval. I don't remember two readings for a calendar approval.
Well, I just gave a full speech, so.
Because I, I thought when you look at it, it always says approval date, February whatever.
So do we want to make this?
So this would be listed as the approval date.
So do we need a?
Rich, do you know?
Yes, I'm not.
The board reserves the right to approve on this reading or for it to be reviewed, direct staff to take feedback and further review, bring it back, however the board could, in the presence of what was discussed last month, in the presence of this survey, take final action if you so chose.
With respect to that, there's been multiple options taken in the past. You guys have fixed these calendars, you've made adjustments to them based on the feedback that we've received after the option survey, so we've done both.
So as that, because it is true, in the past, we have, we have moved some things around, so I think that is why we've brought it back.
Which would require.
We haven't, yeah, we haven't, we haven't asked for anything to be moved around. So we'll assume this is the final one then? Do we need to make it as a motion that that's the final one?
Well, my motion technically stated that we approve B. I didn't say as a first reading, did I?
No.
So I think we're okay.
Okay.
But I could be wrong, I'm not in charge, I don't know.
Thanks Karen. Okay, well, since it was approved as, as calendar B and we didn't say a first.
Yeah, we haven't asked for any tweaks like we've done in the past, so I think we're good.
Okay. Fair, all right. Thanks you guys. Steve and Craig, Craig has to stay there, we're going to invite Steve up.
Yep, I'll stay here and we'll invite Steve up. Ben, are you going to just put the new one on here? I'll do that.
Do I tell them they have two minutes? There's, there's really not as many changes as we've had in the past on this, I, I feel like, so.
Yeah, this, this, hope, there is several slides and we'll go as quickly as we can, but we do have an amendment on this current year's calendar, 2223. We want to recap some rules that will help us as we discuss new changes that will take place for the 2324 fee schedule. And then we also want to share with you the fact that there is a, a current amendment for House Bill 175 that could derail everything that we're doing. However, and, and that current amendment is, is still on the floor. If it comes to fruition, then it could mean that the, the fee committee will reconvene and have to make some adjustments. And then we would start with a first reading again for the 2425 calendar. We're just letting you know that, but in anticipation that because it's unfunded, it may not come to fruition, then we would like to proceed as normal so that we meet the guidelines of, of state fee rule and go through each of our readings. So the first thing is a proposal for an amendment for the 2223 school year. And I'm going to zoom in, which is the next slide. And that is the CTE/CEO class. It's called Creating Entrepreneurship Opportunities. And this is a brand-new class for, that we put into the GTI. And because it's new, we were a little bit unsure as to how it was going to be funded and/or how the students were going to raise money and how much that would be. So to give you a little bit of a, of a history of what's taking place with that class, is the students are learning how to be entrepreneurs. They were given an initial requirement to do a fundraiser together as a group and to learn that process. And they raised over a couple of thousand dollars in doing so. They then were to take that money and then improve on that to come up with a, a bigger fundraising opportunity for the students. And they participated in learning all of the, the options to create their own business. So during that second fundraising activity, and it was a morning with Santa was what they decided to do, they ended up raising about $18,000, which equated to about a net income of $11,000 after all of their expenses. Now, with the fee rule being that fundraising counts as fees, we need to have something in place so that they can continue to raise that money to operate this class within the, the guidelines of the fee law. So that's why we're asking for this amendment. And when we looked at the overall results, we felt like it needed to be a separate line item because what we don't want to do is say all clubs now or classes could raise up to the amount that this particular class was able to raise, which was somewhere close to $1,000 a student. So we're asking for that addition of, for this specific class, a maximum fee of $1,000. And we want you to realize that there was no out-of-pocket monies for these students. They raised these funds through fundraisers. And then they actually go through, I think Julie was a part of it, but they go through a, a board and present their own business idea and request scholarships for a startup for that company. And so that money raised actually goes towards the students at the very end. I believe Julie was part of that board and then, and then we were scholarship some of those students. So that is the recommendation. That will also be on the 22, or 2324 calendar as well, but that is a proposal for you. We do have to do a first reading and a second reading for an amendment. So this is the first reading on that adjustment. Okay? Any questions there?
I, I have a question just on the fundraising because of what happened to my grandson and that I want to question what we do here. He is in a different district and had to fundraise for sports. So they did it online and he had a maximum of, or he was to raise $700. I don't remember the total. When they got back to him and they said, you didn't raise enough, the, the app that they went through took 23% of his money. And so he had $400 more that he had to raise. So my question is, is there some way that, that they can't do that, you know, an outside app or something? Or they can do the money in the foundation somehow rather? Because I received something from a student at Cypress that said, help us use this for, I don't know.
I think it was Snap, Snap Raise maybe?
Yeah. And I just thought, that is awful to take that much money out of what the student is earning.
We have a fundraising approval process through Jared Gardner and Chris Lewis kind of manage that, that little portal. And so we're happy to look into that. There, there's usually a max cap on what the, the vendor can take as part of that. So we'll evaluate that. Yeah.
Each coach is all, coach or advisor is also supposed to run their fundraisers through the administration for approval.
And, and we also have a process with that that allows for parents to now Venmo. And so accounting has come up with a program for that as well. So we're, we're doing everything we can to alleviate any issues like you've mentioned. Yes. Steve is now going to talk about some of the current fee laws that'll affect us.
These are current laws?
I actually just wanted to speak to that CEO program.
Oh, sorry.
I just want to say, that CEO program is going to be one of our gems. It is really amazing. And I mean, we're basically creating, these, these guys are graduating with businesses that are running and operating, and some of them I would invest in. Like, they're really good. One of them is going to, has a, is creating an entire thing where he goes out to people's homes and dusts and refurbishes their taxidermy. No one does that. That's a, that's an, that is not an industry. He is creating a new industry. And he is going to earn a lot of money, you know? And these guys, the fundraising that's happening here, it's not fundraising like you think of in other sports. It's like you create, you learn this entire business, you learn how to make money from it. And they look at who are the, who are their competition and who, you know, it's like, how are we going to differentiate ourselves? What's our budget? Who, they manage teams and it's, it's, it's pretty amazing. So just wanted to speak to that.
Well, and if I can add, thanks to Todd for helping us work within the public school parameters. So thanks for being flexible and helping us figure that out, Todd.
Great new. It's a great new class, we're always evolving on those.
Dusting it.
So I'm going to talk about the current school fee laws. What we have in place, as Craig mentioned earlier, these are always subject to change with the legislature in session, so we'll just kind of hold our breath and see how the end of February looks and go from there. I just remember that back in 2020, 21, USB asked us, are we really start enforcing R277-407? And they defined what a fee was for school. And in that, as Craig mentioned earlier, which is why we had to bring this amendment up for the entrepreneurship class, is that fees also include fundraising. So when the board, as you look at that page with all those fees, that includes out-of-pocket to families, but it also includes anything that's run, run through a fundraiser as well. So it could be a combination. So students will sometimes fundraise for part of that portion of their fee and they'll pay a portion of that fee as well. As you may remember from last year's presentation, there was a significant change to 202223 where the textbook rule went into effect, schools can no longer charge for textbooks. And to help with this, each secondary school was given a school textbook fee replacement allocation from the district. And that was set up by a per, per student basis. And there was a set amount for junior high students for each school and a set amount per student for high schools. And the only textbooks we can allow a fee for right now are for AP and concurrent enrollment books. Any questions on that current?
IB.
IB as well. And that's part of the current legislation they're looking at right now, yeah. To go further on that, to define what a textbook material means, this is a very, very broad definition. So this can mean, anything is instructional material necessary for participation in activity, course, or program regardless of format of the material. So this includes books, novels, sheet music, digital materials, some of our math classes do online learning that way, accounting program, software. All these are considered textbook material, which we now have to cover through our schools. Some of the exceptions to this though include, a textbook does not include instructional equipment or instructional supplies. And those are two different things, so we'll spend a minute talking about each one of those. For instructional supplies, you can charge a fee for non-reusable items that are necessary for a student to use in part of an activity, course, or program. So a lot of times you may see these for some of our CTE classes, like our wood shop, if a student completes a project, they take that wood project home. Some of our graphic classes, kids will make T-shirts or bumper stickers, things of those nature. Those are things that they take home and they end up owning as well. Our Legos for some of our sec, our junior highs, they do a lot of those as well. That's instructional supplies. For instructional equipment, this can, equipment can also be used to charge fees for. These are sometimes fee-wavable, depending on the item, they actually are fee-wavable, but it just depends on what the item is. And so as you see on that list, there's a lot of different items that can cover for that. It could be for some of our GTI classes where they, for health science classes, they buy a stethoscope, that's something they're going to keep for themselves. Or for some of our other programs, cameras or, and musical instrument. So just different things of that. And the final thing is school equipment. So school equipment is something that a school can charge a fee for to replace as new, but they cannot charge to repair them. It's kind of an interesting rule, but you buy it new or you, the school has to pay for the fixing of the item to replace that.
I need some clarification.
Okay, so yeah, we'll explain it. So if you had a tennis net that you, you bought and let's say you needed to have it repaired, the school would have to pay for the repairs. Otherwise, you'd have to plan on building in your spend plan a, a brand-new net. Or a, but a better example would be a blocking sled for football. So let's say some of those pads get, over the years, they get sun rot, the pad, the padding starts to fade. The school would have to pay for the replacement of those if they wanted to recondition them. Otherwise, what a lot of our coaches are doing right now, and a good example of that one is a microscope. So a coach or a academic teacher may plan on how often something they're going to need to replace. So a good example would be a microscope. Let's say they're going to get new microscopes every 10 years. So a science teacher may budget in, we're going to get new microscopes every 10 years. They divide that cost of the microscope over 10 years divided by the number of students and that's how they charge a class fee.
So, sorry.
I know, it's.
So like the rental of the instrument though, you can't use that to repair an instrument or to refurbish it? So we can throw the instrument away, but we can't repair it?
Actually, instruments are considered instructional equipment, so we can, where school equipment is a little bit. So they had to identify which one was which. And so instruments, we can actually repair them.
Okay.
But we can't if it's a school equipment. So that, and then we had to go through and define, well, which is which? And we, we spent a long time going through that process to be able to share that with each of our schools, so they were doing the right thing. And then it's the responsibility of the coach to enter them on their spend plan and it's the responsibility of the principal to authorize or approve that they've done it correctly.
Okay.
And our schools have to decide, the principal have to meet with the, the advisor to decide whether they want to repair that or if they want to just replace.
Okay.
And kind of, some of those things are a little bit interesting. Some costs actually it's cheaper to buy a new item than it is to replace it.
Sure, and I, and I get that part of it, I totally get that part of it. I just was like, we're throwing away good stuff that could easily be repaired for a very small price because we can't use that money to repair it, but instead are going to spend more money to replace it. That seems to me a little ridiculous.
Well, and what we do is we do still repair our school equipment, but what we can't do is charge students an extra fee that would be allocated for that.
But that's, that's where I go back to, well, you're charging a fee for.
For what? Well, and using your microscope thing, okay, so every 10 years and you spread it across 10 years, I, I'm thinking, okay, well, what if my kid's on year nine and this microscope doesn't work, but yet I'm paying the fee? And then, you know, in a year or two, the next batch of kids who are paying the same fee, all of a sudden they have brand-new microscopes and they work. Great. And so to me, it's just, I'm with Nicole, this is, this is weird.
I know you don't make.
That's not a very good word, but I don't like it.
It's not.
I know you don't make the roll.
And I say, all of our academic teachers that have to charge a fee, they have to do a spend plan along with all of our athletics, coaches have to do that as well. So these have, they have to write these items into their plans and budget ahead.
But we do have many battles, as you just mentioned, within the fee committee to, first of all, make sure we completely understand it and then we argue about it and say, well, we don't agree. But ultimately, we want to make sure that we're providing a fee schedule for you that falls within the law.
Thank you. Thank you for being within the law, even if the law is ridiculous.
Okay, we are going to move on to the first reading for the 2324 calendar and the proposed changes that go along with that. So the next slide is going to zoom in. And the first proposal is to increase driver's ed to $185. We've been working with the specialists and they are finding that there are going to be about $140,000 in deficit this year. They're going to need to make some adjustments in order to be able to make it all work out, which they will. But what they're asking for then is they have about 3,000 students who take driver's ed, times that extra 45 will equate to enough to cover that deficit. And so that's what they're asking for. And that was something that the fee committee felt it would be good to, to bring to your review. The next item is actually just a change of placement. And this item says, other admission and off-campus events during school hours, it was actually up in our general fees. And the fee committee, we go through all of the fee schedules and we felt like that actually should not fall in the general fees, but rather should fall under either curricular or co-curricular. So we made some moves and we did that anticipation of future fee laws. If it turns out that this next one comes about, it may eliminate those general fees. And so we wanted to make sure we had them in the appropriate place. So that is just an adjustment. That same adjustment is at the very bottom of the next slide under co-curricular and extracurricular. So it talks about school-sponsored admission fees and fundraisers, which is our stomps, dances, graduation parties, school-level banquets, et cetera. And each of those then fall under the category in which they represent. There is an item on there, of course, the career and technical CEO class that, we talked about that earlier with that, with the, with the change for this year's fee schedule. Those same changes would be addressed as far as changing from general fees or under general fees to where they should go in the junior high area. So other admissions again would go under current course fees or curricular course fees, excuse me. And then the school-sponsored admission fees will go under the extracurricular, co-curricular. So that adjustment's made for junior high as well. Um, we did have one change that we wanted to make a proposal for, and that is the non-wavable charges. The class change fee that we had on there for, um, non-essential. First of all, we looked and saw that nobody is using that, because it's kind of hard to define what's non-essential and what is essential. So the committee decided it's probably best that we just remove that from.
Can I say thank you? Because to charge kids five dollars when they want to change a class, I found ridiculous from the get-go. And then you have the question, well, it is, I mean, you're non-wavable, but I think just taking away the agency alone to go in and say, my schedule's not working for me or whatever. I, I understand we've got to be a little careful because on the, on the flip side, the counselors don't want to be bombarded for the first three weeks of each semester, you know, with that. So I am sensitive to that, but at the same time, we are saying, hey, individualized education, right? You have a choice. You're, you're empowered to take charge of your own learning and everything like that, but it costs five dollars to change a class. And so I'm very happy to see this fee go away personally.
Very good. And then, um, so as we zoom in, that's that fee that will be eliminated from the, the next year's fee schedule. And then finally, there is no proposed changes for the elementary school. So we're asking you to approve this for first reading, and we will look to see what takes place in a month.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Julie. Did you have a question?
Did you want to open it for discussion? I wasn't sure. I was just getting, I was.
I, I just wanted to point out, we do have on the schedule that, um, we do need to allow for public comment regarding the fee schedule, but we did not have anybody sign up for it, correct? So, um, just because of that, unless.
Big, big crowd tonight.
Unless you want to talk about it, Michelle.
Deborah, Michelle, did you sign up? All right.
So that is why it's on there. I just wanted to point that out, why we have to do it that way. Um, so yes, go ahead and open up for discussion.
Do all schools charge for a parking permit? And if they do, where does that money go? What can it be spent on?
So the school itself would do it, has, has to do a spend plan, and it goes into the general, um, student body and is used for activities, events, that type of thing. So, but, but currently, all schools do charge for a, um, for a parking pass. Now, do, how, how do we regulate that parking pass is different at each school? Because it's very difficult, depending on the personnel that you have, to be able to, to go out and monitor that. So they do that differently at each school.
Okay. Um, I just want to reiterate something that I'm concerned, I mean, I, I bring it up every year and I just haven't got my head wrapped around it. I'm concerned that with these fee schedules, we are supporting slash encourage, not encouraging, supporting inequitable experiences for our kids at different high schools and just different schools in general. And I'm concerned that we have this like, here's how much you're allowed to spend. And so then some schools will spend that top dollar and they'll fundraise, and their kids will have these amazing experiences, and then they'll show up to a game or an activity. And another school that charges less, because they're just a little more sensitive to that, shows up also, and they see the inequity right there. There, there's no hiding that, right? And I, I'm just, I'm very concerned that our fee schedule is not sensitive to that. And that what we're, I, I know that we looked at it pretty closely last year. From my end, I still feel like I'm seeing serious inequity. And I feel like it's not okay and that we can't excuse it. And so I, I mean, it, it was too late for us to bring here or anything, but I would really love to see by school, how much are they charging for these things? And, um, those fees won't reflect the kinds of fundraising that they can do in addition to that to change the experience that a student is having in any of these activities. So I don't know how to account for that or how to measure that as part of, because this is a part, they're connected, but they're very separate, you know? So what do you?
So a couple of things on that. So the, the, the amount listed here by the board is the maximum amount they can charge. And to clarify, the, the maximum amount also includes what they can fundraise for too. So whatever a, a coach wants to fundraise for, for an athletic program, has to be taken off that amount and traded to those kids' accounts. So let's say four hundred and fifty was the maximum amount for a given sport, and they fundraised a hundred dollars of that for each player in the program, the maximum out of pocket would be three hundred and fifty per student, because they fundraised a hundred dollars of that.
But you could do a banquet fundraiser night for the whole team and take all of that money for your program, and it's not necessarily given to individual students, right?
Fundraisings goes to the program as a whole. So unlike, like, kind of gave an example of how for her grandson, it went to just him. When we fundraise for a program, it goes to the entire program as a whole. So everyone gets the benefits.
And that's when it's a, a school-required fundraiser, so a sports-specific required fundraiser. But you're speaking to, yes, there are optional fundraisers, and that is not accounted for in this. So it would be the required.
That is what I'm speaking to.
That's what you're speaking to. Well, one of the things that we can share with you, though, is we did in the twenty-twenty-one, we actually presented to the board in nineteen-twenty, but the twenty-twenty-one's fee schedule, we went through every sport and at every school, and we, we went through those totals. We, we took the low and the high and got rid of those. We averaged the middle. And then as a team, um, there were several people from accounting and, and from my department. And actually, we invited principals, Steve was on that as a principal. And we went through and made what we felt like was our best, um, estimate to make sure we supported all programs across the board. And so that's what we did, so that you could approve that. Now, if you were to try to be more specific as far as trying to even make sure that it's more equitable, then that means the board would have to enforce more restrictions. And so that's, we just present to you a maximum right now, and that might be the best way to continue, but that's up to you.
I, I think what's happening is that we have, if we've thrown out those two ends, the people on this end who wanted higher fees have said, oh, that's fine. Yeah, we'll pay this fee over here and then we'll do all these optional fundraisers so that we can continue to have this amazing program. And it's not that I don't want the amazing program. It's that I want an equitable opportunity for every student. And I, 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 I would like to, I'd like to think about how to handle that, because I, I think we need to pay attention to it.
Do we need to define? Is that what you're kind of asking? Define what is acceptable for optional fundraiser, fundraisers versus?
I don't know. I think that we need, I think we need information before we can find, uh, we need to find out, okay, where is this happening? And I just attended a fundraiser a couple of weeks ago that honestly, I could not believe how much money they were earning. And I thought, there's no way this is happening. And, you know, everywhere. And that was only for men's soccer. So I, and I, I thought, maybe this school is doing this for every single sport, right? And, and I, I just don't feel like it's, I, I feel like it needs to be paid attention to. So I'm not saying that I know what the problem is. I'm saying I have an instinct that this is still a problem and that we need to figure out what's going on with it.
And I, let me just mention that I think that, um, many of the structural, um, problems that you're identifying are problems within the statute or in the rule itself that doesn't address some of these issues. And we have identified those issues long before now. We've done the very best that we can to work within the, 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 the rule itself. And one of the things that, uh, our district has implemented that other districts haven't, and in fact, there's been some pushback by USBE on the fact that we have done this, are detailed spend plans, so that, that those coaches and those teachers are accountable for what it is they're spending their money on. And I think that that is, uh, again, one accountability measure that we've implemented to try and address some of the issues that you, that, that you've brought up tonight, without really having the power to do more because of the rule itself. So I think that a lot of these issues need to be addressed with the rule as opposed to necessarily being, um, uh, uh, addressed with the fee schedule that, that's being presented to you tonight.
I, I think you're right, because now that we're bringing all this up, I remember we did, we looked at this, and I remember we did create the spend plan thing in order to attack just this, this very issue. And so I, I, I don't think that maybe this is where this needs to be solved.
And just a reminder, everything on that first page is a fee-wavable fee as well, even athletics.
I, I just, I see what you're talking about, Julie, and I, I, I'm bothered by it as well. And I don't know how, I don't know how to address it, because, for example, I saw a school that I'm, I know had, their show choir had three different outfits. They had all matching shoes for the girls, all matching shoes for the guys. I see that they can charge up to a hundred and seventy-five dollars for their, their dress and two hundred and twenty-five for a tuxedo, plus on top of that, a hundred and fifty. I know that they probably charged that maximum amount so that they could have these fantastic. And then I saw another school that was very cognizant of the type of students that were there, and they had shirts that matched. And it just speaks to the inequity that we have here, that we have these guys getting, going out maximizing this, where we have teachers who are also going and saying, I'm going to let these guys have a fantastic experience. It doesn't matter that they have matching shoes. But it, I just, I feel like there's still that, you know, when they go on stage, what, you know, which group is it that gets, gets all the applause and gets all the accolades? And it's really frustrating to me, so.
And while the inequity is, I think, the biggest issue, there's another underlying issue, and that's that we're a state with open enrollment and now vouchers. And so we compete. Our schools are pegged to compete against each other. And when you're a parent and you're looking, you're, you're, you're seeing the outfits.
And, and other districts that may not have a thousand-dollar cap on, on baseball. They might have a two-thousand-dollar cap on baseball and can hire additional coaches and that's where.
Yes, totally.
We can, we can talk about how frustrating this is, and I think it really does come down to legislative rules, so.
Well, it may or may not. I, I, I am listening to what you're saying, and, and what I think I hear you saying is that wouldn't it be, uh, and so please correct me if I'm, if I'm misrepresenting, but are you saying it would be better if as a des- as a district, as an LEA, we said, boys soccer is going to have a five-thousand-dollar budget at every high school? And you run your program with the same parameters, the same budget that every high school gets? Does that, does that not at least attempt to even out that inequity and to, to even out the competition across our district as an LEA that we support each and every one of our high schools equally? And I'm asking the question, if that's what you're saying. I'm not trying to speak for you.
I think it's a really interesting solution to consider. Yeah.
The only problem with that is there are places that, that, that parents are able to put their children into the specialized, um, sports. I don't.
Competitive sports.
Yeah, the competitive sports, whereas other places in the district are not able to put them. And so that, that part is.
That's true, but that's separate and distinct from the high school season. And if the high school program, the high school season, whether it's madrigals or boys soccer, each school would have the same budget for its program.
How do you enforce that? Do you, I mean, unless we give them the money and say?
That's, I don't know how you would otherwise do it, but that's what I'm saying, is that as an LEA, you would have to specify, this is the, this is the budget, just as you specify, this is the fee schedule. It's not fundamentally different, I don't think, and I'm again asking the question if it is. Here's the budget. We're going to, we're going to fund it as an LEA, and this is the amount that each team gets. And you don't fundraise. You don't go out and do things. We're a public education institution. You don't charge fees. You don't, uh, create those inequities by offering fundraising and, and having flexibility in fee schedules. You just allocate to what is the, the appropriate perhaps and necessary, uh, amount to run a program for that year, whether it's debate, madrigals, or boys soccer. I don't know. I just, I'm, I'm shooting from the hip a little bit here, but.
As I say, that's really interesting. Do we, do you think there's any school districts out there that do that? I mean, there's none in our state. Would you say there is, Todd, or Rich? I'm just wondering if that's even a.
So when I was at Park City, the, the school board had made a determination that academic fees would be covered by district funds and that school fees would no longer apply. But they didn't go so far as to go into extracurricular, because there are some other dynamics that go along with extracurricular, with qualifying for teams or making teams and, and the different levels of competition that you might end up into going to regional state, things like that. So, so there's some other dimensions to that, but they had, uh, removed academic fees.
I would point out that the legislation that's still in, it'll be in committee on Thursday morning for the first, uh, reading, goes that far. It does not go further. It does not cover curricular fees. It is only for academic-related fees.
Can I mention also, just as, as being a high school principal, I would be a little bit cautious of making that decision until everybody makes that decision, because it puts us in an, an disadvantage for other districts by doing that. So that's where I would just be cautious.
Is it something, I can't believe I'm saying this, is it something we would want to look to legislators to help us solve?
That would, that would be the best way to be state-driven. Then there is no, nobody who has an undue advantage, but.
Ben knows what I'm not saying. You probably do too, but.
So I'm not looking at the superintendent, because I don't know if he's giving me a look right now. Oh, he is. He's definitely giving me a look. I think you've found the current environment that we live in is, is driven towards competition. I think we're seeing that the legislature and the political environment is driving us towards more competition. And frankly, capping that would not only eliminate opportunities for our students to be competitive, it might also drive many of our families over to other programs where there are not such limitations. And our legislature would be very supportive of that.
I'm not sure we can solve it tonight, but I just, let's think on it. Let, let's, let's not drop it, if, you know?
I feel like we say that each time we look at these darn fee schedules.
I know. That's why I'm saying, I, it's the third year, and I, I haven't fi- we haven't got it fixed.
All right. It's after ten o'clock. We're getting punchy. Um, this is the first reading. We do need two readings on this, just to clarify. So, um, there's no further questions or discussion?
Do we need to do the, this year's amendment separately from next year's fee schedule?
I would do separate motions.
Okay. I motion that we approve the amendment to the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three school year fee schedule. For all, for all the schedules.
It's just the CEO class for the amendment.
Just the what?
Just the CEO class for the amendment to this year's.
Oh, the CEO class, uh, the amendment with the CEO class for this year's fee schedule.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the amendment to the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three student fee schedule as pertains to the CEO class. We have a second. Uh, is there any other discussion, questions, comment? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Um, and then the B, the B part of this.
I make a motion that we approve the B part of this fee schedule, which is the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-four s- fee schedules for all levels.
As a first reading.
As a first reading.
All right. So we have a motion to accept the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four student fee schedule as a first reading and a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It passes unanimously. Okay. Superintendent.
Somewhere, Garrett Muse, in his retirement, is smiling. The, the baton that he passed you of student fees is being carried so well. Thank you.
You should see the emojis on my phone that he sent yourself.
That, that's a big deal for Garrett to send emojis.
He literally did his doctorate program on, on fees.
Thank you. Uh, I'll be brief on, uh, my superintendent report, just a couple of things. Uh, one, I appreciate, uh, Uh, one, appreciate, uh, the conversation around BDK and we'll get to work, uh, immediately on, and making sure that, uh, as we go down that road, uh, that we're, uh, bringing back reports and information to the board for your consideration as that progresses. Another legislative session and we're about halfway through the session. Uh, there's bills certainly that we're excited about. There's some that we're helping modify language on and there's others that we just don't particularly support. So, uh, but either way, uh, very cordial and constructive conversations, uh, with legislature. Ben's testified to several bills, Todd's working, uh, all things appropriations, uh, among other things, and have had the opportunity to work with our legislators as well. In fact, uh, the Public Education Appropriations Subcommittee, uh, came out with their, uh, list of priorities, funding priorities. And, uh, is that today or yesterday? It seems like it's all but a blur. It was this morning, although I had some conversations yesterday. Um, and, uh, happy to circulate that. But anyway, a couple standout things. One is, is there's, uh, significant funding again for the, um, uh, the student at-risk add-on to the WPU, uh, recognizing that, uh, for, for students that fall into certain at-risk categories, uh, they may need additional resources and so the district, uh, would benefit from, from that investment as well as full-day kindergarten being funded on the WPU. Yep, having it included in the WPU. So that, that's among many other things, uh, just a couple of highlights there and, uh, as...
Optional full-day kindergarten.
Optional, yes, optional full-day kindergarten. Again, not, not mandatory. Yep, not mandatory, um, for parents like, um, first through 12, but, uh, we have far more parents that we're turning away who want it, um, but we simply just don't have the resource to provide it. Um, so this provides greater options, uh, within our district. And to have it funded on the WPU, uh, makes it even better. But to that end, uh, just to remind you of process, so the Public Education Appropriations Subcommittee will then submit that to the Executive Appropriations Committee for their consideration review and so we'll, uh, we'll continue, um, at least it's starting in a very good place in terms of what that recommendation is, as it gets passed along. Also, we'll continue to work on that. And with that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Julie, you want to start?
Sure. It's been a total honor to be able to work up at the legislature a little bit and to meet some people and see how our democracy runs on a different level than I knew before. And, um, meeting some really great people up there who are representing us, whether they, um, whether I agree with their position or not, and, um, that's a great part of the whole thing. It was fun to see our student CEOs at the rotunda and to watch them very intelligently and impressively speak with our state senators and representatives. They represented us very well. I am also like, I am pretty blown away. I did not realize how much our district advocates at, at the legislative level. Um, between Rich and, and Ben, Ben like, Ben is, like, has his own private microphone up there because he speaks to so many bills. And, um, and Todd also is the center of the education, um, respect world up there. And I just appreciate so much being able to understand what's going on through these guys and, um, seeing their efforts and seeing how they advocate for our district individually as well as for all of education. It's, it's been quite inspiring to me. We have our JLC meetings where we talk about the legislature every week, um, at 11 o'clock and they've been here, but from now on they'll be at the Capitol. And, um, you're all invited to come. It's always really helpful when you come, um, for me anyway, because I kind of talk, talk to you and you shed ins, or give me insight into the bills and then I have to vote. So I, I appreciate it when you come. I also want to say that I've really appreciated reading the notes from our committee meetings. That's been something that I've really enjoyed. I got to sub for PE at Comet Elementary this week and, um, first of all, if you want to get to know a school, you sub PE. That is like a different experience than any other. And, but second of all, on my break time, I went and just walked in different classrooms and I haven't done that before. When I subbed, I always needed to just like sit and take a break for a minute. But this time I walked into different classrooms and man, I was so blown away by the kinds of questions that were being asked, the probing questions that made students really think. And then they had many, um, through their expert classroom management, had ways of getting students individually to respond to those questions. And when I walked in the room, I would have expected to be a huge distraction. And in every room that I walked in, students looked back to see that I was there, but then went back to their teacher because they were so engaged in what they were learning that they were like, okay, whatever you're doing, I'm over here doing stuff. And I was, I was really impressed by the expertise that I saw of, of those teachers. So I think I'm gonna walk in more classrooms because they really wow me and that's exciting. Um, and also I've been spending a lot of time this month in s- community councils and PTAs and as they, as people have been working on, PTAs are organizing end of year activities and community councils are getting ready to put their plans in place for next year and just, um, it's just really inspiring to see the, the amount of, um, the engagement is really productive and I, I really appreciate that. Um, so, end of report.
Thanks, Julie. Kim?
Thank you. Also, just to go along with what you said, I've, I've appreciated your updates, um, from JLC and, you know, keeping us updated on what's happening with all these bills. There's, there's so many of them and there's a few in particular I've tried to keep up on, but others that, okay, I didn't know about that one and I heard it from you, so I really appreciate those, those updates as well. Um, I got to participate in district community council this month, which I thought was a really great experience for me, first time. I was really impressed with all of the, the parents and, uh, community council members who were there with the thoughtful questions that they asked, um, their willingness to, to ask questions and to drive conversation. Um, I thought it was really great and I just wanted to, to give them a shout out, like, thank you for, for doing that. Thank you for being on these committees, for representing. Um, want to talk a little more down the road about how to make sure we have more parents, more community members engaged and involved in these committees, how to, how to get that to more people, um, so we can be more representative of our communities. Um, so hopefully more to come on that. And then I also just wanted to give a shout out since it is SCPs going on right now. Um, it's able to go meet with my kids' teachers and it just, you know, reminds me of, again, when you have a great teacher, it makes a huge difference to your child and we've been fortunate enough to have that. I, I just want to share that appreciation for all of you amazing teachers out there who, um, are making that difference for kids every day. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Connie?
I just, I went to Day on the Hill yesterday and that was interesting. Um, I always enjoy, uh, going up there and, uh, meeting with people and seeing also how it's all done. I sat on the floor, um, with a friend and I sat there and I thought, this is how they do it? Because three bills came and the representatives talked about them and then they voted and I thought, how in the world do you even know what those bills are? And one of them, I thought, wait a minute, I wouldn't vote yes on that. Turned to my friend and I said, don't vote! And they, they voted for it anyway. But also I want to say thank you, Board, for the discussion tonight. I know it's late, but we had discussions and I so appreciate that. You guys are awesome. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, Connie. Chris?
Um, I'll just have, I'll be brief. I just wanted to, uh, recognize Michelle Jones again as National, um, Board Certified Teacher is amazing and Stephanie Gonzalez, I think that's impressive when we have teachers who are willing to do that extra work to do something like that. It is a, it is a big task, so thank you. And, um, the best Cypress basketball teams, boys and girls, did win tonight, just FYI. I looked it up. Um, and, uh, I really appreciated that we learned more tonight about our school counselors and what they do. I feel like sometimes we think, oh, they're just the ones changing schedules and, um, doing this, but when, and I appreciate when we do the end of year graduation, um, what is it called? The graduation review? Thank you. Um, how, Nicole was so right, they, they know these kids personally. They know what they're, you know, trying to achieve and helping them so much and some of them are barely making it to graduation and then there's others that they're helping with what's the next step and scholarships and, you know, they, they, they do a valuable work in our schools and I appreciate them very much. Julie already mentioned the legislature about how we have such a big role in Granite, um, in our leadership that advocates for our students here and for all the students in Utah. And, um, it is, it's pretty, pretty, we pretty have a, we have rock stars here and that's, that's amazing to me. I also want to, we've talked about how, um, each of us have different roles on the board, but I appreciate, um, our board willing to sit on committees and to take notes and to fill in each other, um, with things that are happening in our district that maybe, you know, not all of us can be at every meeting and every committee and every assignment. And so, um, thank you for taking the time to send us messages and keep us informed. Um, I think that makes us a strong board when we have, um, knowledge of what each other is doing and what their perspective is on things, so I appreciate that. And, um, so I'm officially old. I have no more teenagers. My daughter's birthday is today, so I'm giving her a shout out. She's 20. My baby's 20. That's all.
Thanks. Karen?
So, I want to thank, uh, everybody who's involved in the legislature and I, I know Rich and Ben are very active in that and the JLC as well, but this is a special shout out to Todd because let me tell you, appropriation committees, that's where it's at. They're the ones that are handing out the money and that executive appropriations committee is powerful. And so the more, and Todd, I'm not saying anything you don't know, right? So the more we have those relationships, the more we have those relationships because a lot of leadership sits on, um, executive appropriations and, and so that's, that's where we can have a lot of success or a lot of disappointment. Um, you know, that full-day kindergarten was funded last year till the very end and then it was just cut out. And so I'm fingers crossed that it actually sells through this year and we get that money attached to the WPU. Um, cup, just the, two brief things, uh, the, we had a region swim meet. I have a child involved in swim and it's held at the West Valley Rec Center. Now, if you've been there, they have like one bench and there's a bajillion teams and so there is nowhere. They actually discouraged parents from coming, but they have now learned, they've streamed it. And so they actually have a commentator and they stream it on YouTube. And they actually did this back in December, I forgot to mention because December was a little bit crazy board meeting with consolidation studies going on, but, and so I failed to do it, but it's really nice to actually sit on your couch and the region, the, the districts are held at Olympus High and there is seating there, but not enough for eight teams. And, and so it's been really nice to actually have the convenience of being able to support your kid and actually see them, um, on, on the big screen, not only for me as a mom of a swimmer, but, um, I just thought, you know, there, there were over 130, I think, online watching. And I thought, that's, that's really great that we're bringing that service to our families and making it a little bit easier for them. Um, so I just want to make mention of that, that that's, those kinds of things are happening in our district. I think that's a great service. Last but not least, been to several community councils, but one in particular stands out. It's Kearns Junior High. Um, I went and, and I was a couple minutes late, um, but as I walked in, they were talking about the school creed and the graduate of granite. And so they've really embraced this and, and so every day, um, they have the kids stand and basically say this creed and it goes through, I'm respectful, I'm dependable, I'm a great communicator and then it has a, some, anyway, it just kind of goes through some of those skills and, and their biggest hope is just, hey, the kids can internalize this. And that really, that impressed me that they're taking it to that level on their own volition. And, uh, so that really, that really stood out to me. So that is all I have.
Clark?
Um, I've been to a flurry of events, uh, the last few weeks, it feels like, um, from the superintendent's town hall at Cottonwood High School to the Bonneville Viking Night Open House. This Friday night, there's a Granite Park Night at the Cottonwood Basketball, uh, game. And speaking of Cottonwood Basketball, the superintendent came out for a game, uh, just last week. Um, I wouldn't know what this was like, uh, would be like, but the ball actually came towards Dr. Nye and was rolling towards him. He picked it up, much like I would pick up a tennis ball and, and took it and kind of flipped it at the, at the referee. So I just thought it was great for, um, the, both the patrons, uh, and, and the staff and the faculty at the school, uh, which was, uh, an extremely well-attended game, uh, to see him there supporting our students on a Friday night and the next Monday morning, he's basically up on the hill, uh, lobbying for our district and, and working with legislators along with the rest of his team. So thanks for all that you do for our district, Rich. Um, we sincerely appreciate you being seen, um, and being with us, um, out in the community.
All right. Thanks, Clark. Um, I just was gonna give you an update on, I was asked to, um, sit on a committee with Benning Junior High School. They have applied for a grant through the state that is similar to the type of money that you would get as a turnaround school, even though they're not a turnaround school yet. They qualify in one of the categories and so they've been able to get this grant. They worked through, um, Dr. Erin Wilson and to get this. And I, I have to say, I'm super excited about it. Like we, we met with the consultants and they've done their analysis and we're, we're meeting as a team and I know it's a lot of work and a lot of, a lot of things going forward, but, um, gosh, what a great opportunity.
Can I just say Valley's doing that too and I'm in the, you're, it sounds like you're a little ahead of me, but they've qualified, I think, for the same grant, so we'll have to compare notes later.
I think it's, man, what a great opportunity. And, and because it's not a, because it's not a turnaround school, they have a lot more flexibility on how they spend that money. And so we were talking about how to do it and just, um, the teachers are excited and the parents that are on that committee. And so, um, I'm looking forward to that and seeing how that goes. Um, I just want to reiterate also what has already been said. Thank you for our team for being visible and being up at the Capitol and being people who are, are, are someone that, that people turn to for knowledge. We appreciate you having that, having that expertise here in our district and also for our state. I think that's so important and we appreciate all that you do. Um, Fridays up at the Capitol are educator days, so, um, wear your red too on Friday if you're gonna come up for the JLC too, right? Red for Ed. Um, anyway, um, but we appreciate all the, the representation and, and, uh, working with those, those lawmakers. All right. Um, thank you. Sorry, Clark, we're a little bit behind.
A little.
I did, I did tell him that he asked for an added agenda item, so it was his fault. Um, all right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion to adjourn.
All second. All right. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.